Today, we're in a special session, July 10th. Location is Woodland Church. I don't know if that's needed, but...
Thanks Sasha. So yeah, thank you guys for being here. Obviously, we've been, just so the public knows, who was watching, we had an executive session with some board training this morning with ISBA. So thank you for your work during that. And shifting now to our strategic planning session. And just so you're aware, everyone's aware that we're not making any decisions today that necessarily that would require board action. But we are talking about the direction of the corporation and what's important to us, what's important to you, what's important for us moving forward as we plan. You know, Leslie obviously pushed hard for strategic planning, which I think is awesome. We need it as a corporation. One of the things we got out of our first ISBA planning session or training session that we had earlier in the year was the fact that Steve told us, you need to have a strategic plan, like you need to have a North Star and goals that you set. That every decision we make is filtered behind those goals, right? And do they align? And so, yeah, so we were in the process of choosing a strategic planning partner. Lauren Starr has been here and she was your choice after we had had some discussion. And so I'm going to turn things over to her. She's the expert here who's going to lead us through that process. And I'm excited about it. So thank you again for giving your time. We'll turn things over to Lauren. Lauren Rockwell.
Thank you so much, Jim. Thank you all for being here. I know you've been at it for a couple hours now, but more importantly, thank you for allowing me to be here and be part of this journey. I know we all kind of got to me, I was talking at you last time, so it was very formal. Today is going to be the opposite. I'm not going to be talking at you. I'm going to be helping facilitate the conversations, continue the conversations that have already been going on, the valuable work. We're going to get up and move around, so I apologize to the camera. We'll keep it where we need to be. But we are going to make sure that we're doing the activities that break out all of that really great conversation and start leading us on the way. I know you all know me, I will do the formal introduction, Lauren Starr, I know most of you. I've had the opportunity to be on the sidelines with a lot of you, see you in the school building, around the corner when my dog harasses you, all of those things, right? She does, she would lick you to death.
We've reached an agreement, yeah.
Friendly at this point in life. But thank you all. I will not make you all go around the table and do one of those awkward icebreakers and tell me your name and like what your favorite food to eat is, unless you want to tell me that. Dustin, what's, you want to tell me what you like to eat?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, there you go. I won't make you do that unless you want to do those awkward icebreakers. It's not really my jam. But I will tell you, I have this fancy, fancy list over here. If I catch, you know, if someone falls asleep, it gets a little heavy in here, if we need a, need a laugh, we, okay, oh, we already called him out? All right. We have a little bit of fun, but it'll only come in as needed. I won't make you know what's on that favorite color and food out of the game. But did everybody get a folder that has documents in it? Just want to make sure everybody's got it. Okay, perfect. So the very first thing I'd love to do to set the day, also another thing I want to let you all know, this day is very fluid. If something comes up and we need to go in a different direction and we go off script on the agenda, that's what today is for. Also, please don't feel the need to raise your hand or do any of those formal things. Yell my name, hey, you could yell mom at me 75 times, my kids think that gets my attention. You could yell mom, mom, mom over and over again, but that's not what today is for, right? So if you, when those thoughts come up, please share them, yell them out. We're going to jot down a lot of information to be able to retain and carry forth. So I may have my back turned, just yell the things out. Okay, level set that as we go in. But the very first thing you should have in your packet is an agenda for the day. And like I said, this is fluid. If we hit all the marks, fantastic. If we're not able to get to all of this, that means something else was more of a priority that came up. So we went through kind of the welcome, you all know who I am, I know who you all are, and we're going to get to know each other a little bit more. And the very first thing we're going to dive into is the strategic planning overview. And I know when I was able to come to the school board meeting, we were able to very quickly, I think it was like 12 minutes flat, right? So we weren't able to get in and we weren't able to have some dialogue around it. So we're going to bring that conversation back up. We will talk through it. I want you all to ask any questions. It's not lost on me that strategic planning is not everyone's, you know, kind of forte. They may not have experience in it. There are no silly questions. Ask all the questions if you're unfamiliar with them as we go through. And so we're going to do that and we're also going to talk about the board's role in the strategic plan process. Because you made me question, how do I fit in? Where does the directional team, where does the community come into this? And so we're going to talk through those different things. And when I say talk through, that is going to be dialogue. Do you feel that that aligns? Where do you feel you fit in? And we're going to come to a common ground on that. And then up until lunch, once we go through that, we're going to talk current state. We are going to talk about the good, bad, and ugly, right? We have to, before we know where we're going to go, we have to talk about where we are. So we're going to dive into current state. And that's where I'm going to get my marker out and you all are going to yell all the things at me and we're going to jot them down. And this is where there's no wrong answers. Everybody's opinion is valid and we're going to get all of that out there. Because we're going to break it all down before we build that back up for that strategic plan. So that is going to be our activity that's going to lead us to lunch. And you have my word, the second we see lunch set up, I will stop dead in my tracks and you all can eat. I promise you that. But that's going to lead us into lunch. I do have a build that you all can take a break at lunch. We don't have to have a working lunch unless you all would choose to. So you can decompress a little bit. And then when we come back from lunch, we're going to dive into top priorities mapping. And this is going to be large group discussion. We're going to do, I don't know if anybody's familiar with complexity thinking, it's kind of type of a facilitation manner. And so we're going to do something that's going to feel a little silly if you've not done it, but we're going to get lots of ideas up here. And then we're going to highlight with little dot stickers, the items that stand out. And we're going to cluster themes together. And we're going to see what's starting to bubble up to the top. And so we're going to do that with our top priorities mapping. And then we're going to dive into an exercise that's all around core values. Because our top priorities are what, our values are how we're going to get there. So then we're going to align those top priorities with the values activity. And then we're going to have a break, I promise you. And again, when you see break in here, you're all adults. Get up and use the restroom, get a drink, get a donut if you need a donut anytime. You don't have to wait, I promise, for this in any way, shape, or form. Please, this is very relaxed. Please get up, do whatever you need to, no matter if it says break or not. And then one thing I wanted to, and this came from some discussion that Jeremy and I were able to have, is I wanted to open it up in regards to a mission statement. Now, we all know that there is a mission statement out. But usually in the sense of a strategic plan, we may want to question, do we all align with that still? While the priorities may all still be the same, do we want to update that? Do we want to have a collective mission that you all can stand on? And much in the sense of a strategic plan, when we talked about it just sitting on a show, does that mission statement mean something for us all? So that's going to be dialogue around that. And there hasn't been a decision made, that's something we want to discuss. So I have an activity centered around that. And then to close us out today, we're going to do a vision exercise. Where we're going to put on, you know, our most positive hats and we're going to say we had the most successful strategic plan. And three years from now, what do we think we're going to start hearing? What's the dialogue on the sidelines of the baseball field? What do we hear when we're going into the PTO meetings? What do we hear, you know, standing in line at Kroger when someone gets your ear and wants to tell you all the things? What is the positive we're hearing with a successful strategic plan? And then we'll have a brief wrap up and we'll talk about the next steps in the process. And so that is our agenda today. I know that sounds pretty heavy, I promise it's not as heavy as it sounds here. We'll have some fun along the way. We'll get up and move. But if we don't make it to all of these things, like I said, we'll shift direction on there. And the next thing on this agenda I wanted to talk about is our goals for the day. So ultimately, we want you all to have a shared understanding question, if you have any questions about it, but about the strategic plan process as a whole, right? We want to have clarity, so you know why the board is choosing to have, go on this path, what our outcome is going to be, and a clear cut plan on how we're going to get there. We may not know all the details, but we all will be in agreeance on that. Then we also want to reflect on, like I said, current state and those aspirations. If all goes well, where do we want to be? And so that is one of our goals for today. We're going to identify our priorities and our guiding values. Those are going to bubble up to the top if we are doing this right. And then we also want to build clarity of what success looks like. I know you all heard this in my presentation about, you know, we can have the greatest strategic plan, but if it sits idle on a shelf, it's not worth the paper, it's riddle, right? So we're going to talk about what a successful plan looks like for the corporation. And then ultimately, we want to set those expectations, like I said, on what your role in the process looks like so that we have clarity going forward. Now, this on the bottom, this is not unique to you all, this is kind of the level set I always use with any facilitated session, but we have a few guidelines. And that is, this is a no judgment zone, right? And you all know this, this is why you all are here, this is why you're part of the board. We're all here for a common goal and all, you know, ideas, thoughts, questions, concerns, they're all balanced. So we always lead with that. Assuming the best intentions, right? Same thing, we're all here for a common goal, so no matter if someone is questioning things, if they're asking you why maybe you have that thought, everybody is coming with the best intentions. And then ultimately respecting all the voices, right? Ask the questions, there's no disrespect in asking someone why, but we want to make sure everybody has a voice in this process, no matter what that voice is. So those are our level set for the day. Any questions on our agenda, what we're going to try to hit the marks for today? Okay, y'all are going to have to use more donuts, you have a little more sugar in there. Okay? That's all right. We'll get up and get moving here. So that is what we're going to focus on. You're going to see me check my watch often, I want to make sure that we are being respectful of your time here as we're going to. So that is what we are setting forth today. And ultimately, we are here today to have open dialogue. This is a collaborative event. This is why you're not going to see a fancy PowerPoint behind me. I'm not, this is probably the most talking at you I'm going to do the whole day. This is for your dialogue, your questions, your concern, and getting your thoughts out in a facilitating manner. So that is our focus of today. The next thing in your packet, and I know you all have seen this, but this is the strategic plan process timeline. And this is that high level overview that I shared, I believe, when I was at the school board meeting, of what that process is going to look like. And when I was with you in person, I shared that that is also fluid, right? We know that no plan is just linear and it's going to go just the way we hope it's going to be, but this is going to be our path that we are going to follow. Jeremy and I were talking and admittedly, he said, you know, how fast can we go? How can we move? And the answer is, as fast as we can allow here. So when we leave here today, we're going to have a clear cut plan on what the next step is. And when we finish that, we're going to know exactly what our next step is and always keeping that forward motion. But this is that overview. So I wanted to just for the next about 10 minutes, talk through the actual strategic plan creation process. And then we're going to talk about your role in that process additionally. So the big pillars in strategic planning are discovery. That's where we are right now, right? This is why we're here, this is why we're going to get all this end of paper. We're discovering current state. What are our top priorities? What are our values? Where do we want to go? And so that is the first piece of that. It's not only going to happen at this level, this is where we're going to take that into the directional team. This is where we're going to take it into the school spaces. This is where we want to have the community factors and workforce partners to have a voice in this. So your discovery phase may look a little bit different than what the different areas' discovery phase is, but we are doing the discovery phase right now. That's essentially a current state assessment across the board. While you all have more details and can give different information for your current state, we may get, and we will get, a completely different set of details when we go into the school spaces, when we talk to that directional team. Not to say they're not aligned with yours, but they are, they're in the classrooms, their boots on the ground, right? They're seeing things from a different lens. So we're going across that discovery phase right now. Then we go over and we are transitioning into that stakeholder input. This is where we may do a community survey. It's always a really good grab in the community. QR codes, we can put a, you know, a graphic out on social media, we can ask people to take a quick survey, so we can get that stakeholder input. We are going to do some SWOT analysis, that's probably what'll happen with the directional team, when we dive in and we get some information there. And we're in that gathering, discover and gather phase. And then we're going to go over to the strategy mapping. And this is, if any, have you all been part of a strategy mapping session? Has anybody yet, right? That is the, that is the brain work in there. But we'll dive in and we'll take all of that, all of that cataloged information from all of those different sessions in those different forums. Hundreds of those big white pieces of papers with lots of post-it notes will be cataloged there. And we will build it all back up. And ideally, what we will see is some really clear cut, reoccurring themes that bubbled up from every single one of those sessions. And then that is what the foundation of your strategic plan is. Because then we can say without fail that we've touched all facets, we have a diverse population, and everybody stands on these pillars, these themes. And that is how we breathe that strategic plan out of it. And so we'll move on to that, that's that plan development. We will draft an actual drafted plan. We will bring this back to the board, right? This is going to be lots of checks and balances throughout this whole process, lots of checks and balances. And we'll talk a little bit more when we go to the board's role in this. But this isn't something that is done just with the board. This is not something that's done just with the directional team, it's not something that's done just in those community partners and in the educational spaces. This is a collaborative effort with everybody's voice in it. So that's one thing I definitely want to make sure everyone's aware, that everybody will have unique roles in it, but it will be done collectively in the process. And then ultimately, we will get there, I promise. Our goal is to hopefully be in about six to eight months, the beginning of the new year, to have either the draft or a final form of that plan as we go into 2026 to be able to stand on. And then that is where we will lean onto you, of course, for that final approval. But hopefully, at that point, you have, we have vetted, you have done everything and it's going to be that unanimous decision and we can move forward on it. I know that seems easy breezy. It's not easy breezy. It's a lot of work and it's captured in a five step process, but there will be very clear cut indicators if we're hitting the marks throughout this, and I have no doubt that we will. Any questions on strategic planning process? We will talk about your role on the next document, but any questions on logistics of that, what that may look like?
The only, it's not a question, this actually comes out of our session we did prior. If we were to have like a board page, we could kind of let the public know during these months-
Absolutely.
-that we are in this process. And I just think that would be more transparent.
Absolutely. I wholeheartedly agree. That would be a suggestion that we don't gatekeep this, right? We don't want to say we're working on this in our little bubble. We want them to know, hey, we're setting the foundation now, we're going to come asking for your opinions. We're going to be holding these listening sessions, please take part in it. So I would absolutely suggest, and that could be something we talk about, a communication plan. You know, once we have done through this level of work and we have our variance in a clear direction and we work with the directional team, it would be a communication out to the public. Absolutely. I think that's a great point. Definitely, I see. Absolutely. Any other questions, things that come up as we, as we talk through this? You can yell them out at any time. Okay, so the next document you have, excuse me, is the role, your role in the strategic planning process. And while this may look very black and white, literally, and finite, it is not. This is a starting point. So if there are things that you don't agree with, you want to question, we want to edit, that is what this is for. But I wanted to give some documentation for us to start on here. You all, quite frankly, are the most critical part in this. And I, that almost sounds contradictory, as I said, we're not doing this solely, but you are setting the foundational work for this strategic plan. Obviously, you set the choice to even move this forward and for me to be standing here. You all are the most critical, but we want to be cognizant that we are not saying that is only bred from the school board. And that's why we're going to have those factors on. You are that essentially guiding light here. This is where, when we have questions on something that maybe came up in a SWOT analysis or at the directional team, it's being brought back to you all to give the feedback and the guidance on it. And then say, I agree with that, let's set forth an action plan based off of that. So you are to guide and approve the final strategic plan. You ultimately are ensuring the alignment with those community values. And not only the community values, the values you all have that's sitting on the board, why you all are there here. We want to make sure that the plan that is produced aligns with all of that. You also are setting the vision and articulating the top level priorities for our student success. That's why we're going to capture all of that. These top level themes, we hope, align with all those other themes that we are going to see come out of these sessions. And that's where that's coming from, from you all. You are going to support and monitor the progress of all other parties involved. So when we take this to the directional team and we'll do forms of this with the directional team, we'll bring that back to you. And we want to share, hopefully, wow, they are aligned just as aligned with you. Or this was something that bubbled up that maybe we weren't able to discuss, what's your thoughts on this? Same thing when we go into the community, if we have a survey, for example. We will then want to bring those survey results back to the board, let you all analyze those, give the feedback. So you are always that checks and balances throughout this entire process. And then this is a great point Leslie just brought up, you are the champions of the plan publicly. And if we need resources, you know, there may be things that we need to ask the board, can you assist with that? That's where we are going to come to you all. Before we're able to take any action, we're going to need that assistance from you. And the reason I wanted to share this, not to tell you what your role in here is, but to have this conversation, is so that you all know that you have the most important process and part in this process. And we are going to lean into that to help guide all of the work that comes from that. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of. And then it's commitment to the process. And I usually don't do this, but I am going to read this one completely out loud here. "The board will remain engaged throughout key phases of planning, provide guidance at critical points, and serve as final approvers for the strategic plan," excuse me. "Additionally, the board will receive regular progress updates during scheduled board meetings. Members will be asked to provide feedback and guidance at key milestones, ensuring they are actively included and engaged throughout the entire planning and implementation process." And the reason I wanted to share that in full was, we want to make sure that there is progress and updates continually through this. We don't want to go to a board meeting where we're not sharing, because ideally, there's never not going to be progress. If we have a tight timeline of six to eight months, we should always have forward motion, we should always have an update. Even if we're stalled in some capacity, that may be where we're coming to you, asking for some of those resources or assistance in this. So we want to make sure that we're updating continually for us to have that momentum. Additionally, what the ask will be of the board, is if we're not coming forth with those progress or updates, ask why, right? If we, we want you to be that accountability for the work that's happening for the plan. So that is the ask. If we don't have that update, ask what that update is so that we can keep that moving throughout the process. And I did note in here, regular board meetings, there may be sessions where we need to have these work sessions again, right? There are going to be times, and so of course those things will come up, but our kind of definite that we are going to offer up is that there's always going to be those progress updates. Or in turn, you will then ask for those if we are not. But we want to have that forward motion as we go through. I know, I just did a lot of talking at you, which I said I would not do, but I would love to have some conversation around your role in the process, thoughts on it, does that align with maybe what you thought or didn't think of your role in the process? Anyone? I can do awkward silence all day, yeah.
I think you've given us a really good foundation here of what we need to do. And the absence of a strategic plan is just, is not been a good situation for us-
Sure.
...given, given the current climate. So I think that we don't know enough to know what we don't know at this, at this particular, at this particular juncture, but I think we all recognize how important it is to go forward, to have a strategic plan, so we're not playing, we're not playing whack-a-mole. Every time something, something comes up, we have, we have goals, we have things that we want to accomplish, and we set up programs to get to there. But like I said, I think right now, this is so new, that we just don't know enough to know what we don't know.
Yeah, that's really good, Amy. I just want to, I want you to hear from me that this is the work. And I think that's really important to hear, because everything that you do and I do and Kim does is supplemental to the hard work that happens in the classroom. But we talk about like, what do we want for a student when they get done with 13 plus years of education with us, right? Because they're on that journey with us for, for a long time, as they go from little Spartan all the way up to being a senior in high school, some beyond seniors. But what do we want? And we talk a lot as a staff about the day after graduation really drives what we do. So when, when a kid graduates, that day after graduation, are they prepared for life? Do they have, do they possess what they need to possess in regards to credentials and all the things that they need to be successful? Do they possess the skills that they need to have to be successful? The knowledge, the know-how, and a path forward, like a plan for the future? Even though they don't have it all figured out, but, but that is the work, hear me. Like everything else, again, facilities, finance, policy, all of that is important, but still supplemental to the work. And this is the work, okay? So I want to say that because I don't want to understate the importance of the work that we're doing today and the work that we'll continue to do, and fine tuning the goal, right? And fine tuning the, the steps to get to the goal, the action steps. So, so yeah, I just probably couldn't even say that, but this is, Lauren, very good in regards to the board understanding their role. You know, obviously, we saw the directional team that's been having a lot of conversation in the course of the last year, and it's been very productive, I feel like, and with the portion of graduate and the things that we're working on. And I think really, we kind of bid our strategy a little bit towards the end. I do, they want to keep working through the summer. I haven't asked them to, because I didn't want to take away their time in the summer, but they've not been knocking on my door either, so I think, okay. But, but, but getting really in the weeds with, with mastery indicators for kids and as we talk about our portrait and like, we want kids to be an effective communicator. What does that look like in grades K, 1, 2, 3, 4? And that's the work that's happening next there. But, but again, I just want to level set to say that this is the work that is most important for our school corporation. And it's, it's a journey. Like we, when we set our strategic plan, it better not sit on the shelf, right? It needs to be brought back to you each and every board meeting. My plan will be to bring you and say, hey, we're going to focus on, you know, here's our goal, like whatever it is, if it's fiscal, if it's facilities, or what have you, and say, here are the things that we've done within this umbrella and where we are towards the goal that we've set. And then, and then maybe even annually, as we have a retreat, you know, we pull it back, we level set again and we say, are these things still important? Did we, did we make the mark, right? Did we, did we veer and go the direction we shouldn't have gone? And that really, again, is what's most important. So anyway, I just want to say all that to say, thank you, Lauren, for your leadership in this and helping us through it.
Of course. Does anyone have any questions, thoughts on, does this, do you feel like this reflects the needs of the district for this point in time? Right? We know there's so many things coming in from above that we can't control, but knowing your areas, the district, do you feel like this will hit the marks on creating a strategic plan that, that is an idol, that we are able to move on? Because that's the ideal, right? Is that we want to have an action plan already built up, ready in the wings to move on that strategic plan. Subcommittee's groups that are moving things forward. That's how we advance this. Do you all feel that this is going to fit the needs of the district?
I think the strategic plan always fits the needs of the district, really. I do think, given our fiscal picture going forward, if that's, you know, and I guess from the side of this group, if we got some goals fiscally-
Absolutely.
-that's really pertinent right now, so, but, you know, like you said, Jeremy, that'll get tweaked after the next one. Thankfully, legislature's not a budget here, but, you know, every year legislature and every year, legislature, I mean, give us some new parameters. So, fiscally, I think it's really pertinent right now. But then, we always, in all schools, we need this, right? Always.
Ideally, what will happen is when we set this strategic plan and we set those things, no matter what happens externally, no matter what comes down, while that will stay our goals, we may have to tweak the action plan to make them happen. We may have fiscal constraints. I mean, there is no doubt there's going to be new fiscal constraints. But if we keep this strategic plan as that northern star where we have to get to, then we come back to the drawing point on how to get there. Not if we're going to get there, but how are we going to change the things that we need to do to get there in a different manner? Because it's, it's going to happen. I don't have to tell you all. Unfortunately, there are going to be things, most, up top of the list are probably going to be fiscal. But when we're thinking of our top priorities and our core values, those should be things that we can maintain no matter what, in no matter what way that we have to do them.
Can I say one more thing? And I, I want you to hear from me that there, there literally are no rules. Other than those things that are important as far as respect for each other, and like, those are, those are foundational. But in terms of what this looks like, there's, there's not a rule, right? So like, I did this work with my previous district, and we were like, we got dug in, we had to have a mission statement, and a vision statement, and all these things. And we come down to it, and we're like, well, what's the purpose of it? Right? And so we ended up, we literally had a vision statement that was, by, by words. That was it, literally. Because the purpose was, effectively communicate to people what we were trying to do, right? And it, and that did it. And so, hear me, there's no rules of how it has to look, and what the deliverable ends up looking like. Like, there, there's no rules to that. And I've told Lauren the same thing, like, it will innately bubble up, I think, throughout the process as we go, in terms of what it looks like. Anyways, sorry.
Absolutely. That's such a great point. There are no rules. There is no prerequisite that you have to have a mission and a vision statement, one or the other, both. You can keep the same one, we can have a new one. It's whatever fits the needs. And so that is a great level set. Thank you for bringing that up, Jeremy. There is no cookie-cutter way that we want to have this handled. Any other questions, concerns, comments anybody would like to share in regards to the process and the roles in the process? Those are also going to be fluid. I can't predict that your role is going to be exactly that, black and white, and we're not going to have any other needs. So just know that. You know, there may be when we come and say, we need to have a subcommittee, because we have a couple of board members that you'd like to be part of this, that we would like to have your comments and concerns and have you part of that subcommittee. So there's going to be other needs. But this should be a good foundation for where we're starting. And we will, we will take it as we go through this process, that those changes come up. So I do want to share that. But before we move on, anything else anybody would like to talk about in regards to role and process? Done? Okay, fantastic. All right, we're going to dive in to current state. This is the fun stuff. This is where I'm going to get my bucket-o markers here and get to writing. And so can you all see, if I am writing right here, can you all see who's behind all these in the brightest colors? I promise here for everybody here. Okay, before we dive into that, I feel like we need, we need a little laugh here. And remember those rules that I said about the guidelines for our session, where there's no judgment, we're not gonna, you know, everybody's got a voice? This is one thing that we may judge you on your answers, so I'm going to give you a heads-up on it. We may laugh, we may judge you, and we are definitely going to ask you why you answered like that. So who's my brave soul? Number one, you're going into this blind. I'll pick a brave soul if not.
Oh, I'll do it.
Okay, okay, you got, give me a number, 1 to 25. Pick any number.
22.
22, okay. And I am going to, if I don't like it, I'm giving you another one.
Wait a minute, I like 22.
Okay, okay, this is a good one. We'll go, we'll let you have this one, Kim. Would you rather have a rewind button or a pause button on your life? Do you want to go backwards, or do you want to pause at where you do it?
All right, that's easy, I want to pause.
Pause.
I don't want to go backwards.
Yeah, okay, pause, I like it. Okay, that's a good one. I feel like we started it off easy. There's some really good ones down here. Okay, anybody else want to add a question? Who's brave soul?
I'll do it.
Okay, what's your number? 1 to 25? 25. 25, okay.
If she likes it.
Okay, you ready? Would you rather be able to speak every language fluently or be able to play every single instrument perfectly?
That's an easy answer.
Language.
Language? That's what I was going with the answer. I don't need to know how to play the drums or trumpet, okay? Okay, one more, let's do one more. We get to know a little bit about everybody like this. I'd rather know this than what your favorite, if you like pizza or not, frankly, or if you like blue is your favorite color, these are the fun ones. Okay, okay, what number do you want?
3.
3, okay. Oh, this is good.
Oh, this is good.
There are some when I give them, it's kind of awkward when your boss is in the room and things like that, but this is a good one. Okay, would you rather your boss gave you a standing ovation every time you speak or give you a pie in the face once a week? Do you want to be applauded every single time words come out of your mouth?
Pie in the face.
What? A pie in the face?
Yes, I know.
You don't want to have the...
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, that's hard, I don't like it.
Did I pick which kind?
So now, now I want to know what your favorite is. What is your favorite pie that you would get in the face?
Strawberry.
Okay, I like it. I get a little messy every week, but all right.
It's fun.
Okay, I like it, see? I like it. Okay, we'll do some more of these later. That's the fun stuff. It's better than those other ones. Okay, so we're going to dive in. Let me get my markers. I like to have some handsy to anyone's. Okay, so we're going to dive in to current state. And a little bit of the ground rules for this is, this is where we say quantity is key. Throw them out. First thoughts that come to you. I will, you throw them out as fast as I'm writing them here. So please don't raise your hand, just throw them out. What we're trying to create here is a, is a snapshot of where we believe the district is as a whole. And so this can be, if this is specific in classrooms, if this is as a whole, there is no right or wrong in this. This is current state. And like I shared before, we have to talk about, before we talk about where we're going, we have to talk about where we are. So this is the good, bad, and the ugly. This is where we break it down, and we're going to build it back up. I personally always like to start on the positive. So my very first prompting question usually is, what do we do really well right now? No matter what's going on, what are we doing really well?
I think we're really trying to address social emotional needs. I think we, we have been, over the past couple of years, really trying to dig in with COVID.
And you said social emotional.
Social emotional. Okay.
What else?
Consistency of staff.
I'm sorry.
Consistence, consistency of staff. Like, not having large turnover of staff.
Except for central office.
Oh, yeah.
What else do we feel like we're doing really well?
I think we're doing a good job maintaining our facilities and upgrading our facilities as needed.
Maintaining facilities and needs. What else?
I think we have some really great teachers in the classrooms.
Great teaching.
Absolutely.
What else?
I think our transportation system is good, very good. The bus system is not the best. What I was about to say, new technology?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's, it's awesome.
Little Spartan preschool, the fact that we use our title money for those kids in collaboration with Head Start, because if you look at the statistics where we were prior to that time with kids coming in with kindergarten readiness, they just weren't. We had a huge percentage of our kids that were not kindergarten-ready. And now, that percentage that are not ready has dwindled exponentially. So we, we're front-loading things a whole lot better and using our, our monies to front-load rather than trying to fix something when they get older.
So being proactive with the...
Being proactive, absolutely.
Absolutely, fantastic.
We have a fabulous career center.
Career center, yeah.
Yes.
What else? What is something that we're doing? And you can think, instead, we talk a lot about the actual spaces. What are we doing as a whole for our students?
I think that extracurricular activities that's offered is, we're doing really well with.
We're off, to, to that point, particularly at the middle school level, we're offering so many more opportunities for kids to participate in sports. We, they, we more from clubs for soccer, baseball, and the like. It's now, it's part of the whole athletic program. So the more you can get kids involved extracurricularly, the, the better, the better they are.
Right, absolutely. Now, does that include, are we talking to sports, or are we talking to clubs?
Clubs, we don't do such a good, middle school doesn't do such a good job of it. But, but as far as the sports things that we've had, and I know that, that the, the high school has worked on some clubs and some other types of things to get kids, to get kids involved, because some of the clubs are actually going on field trips this year.
Great.
I think our schools are always clean and ready for the kids every day. And the safety of the kids is always on top of everything.
So our spaces are, we will maintain.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
I will say that, oh, you know, this is kind of a, I mean, every school corporation should be doing this,
but I think we pay really close attention to legislation and current issues and making sure that we are in alignment. And even beyond that, I remember talking to Kim, Kim Geesting, back when book banning or some groups having trouble with books. This goes way before the push. You guys were already on it, looking at our book lists, making sure that those targeted books that were really offensive weren't in our buildings, and logging everything. So I think we've been proactive about, I mean, we couldn't have anticipated where that was going to go, but we've been proactive to anticipate the broader needs, whether that's what the legislature's going to do, and follow, like, keeping up. And we're doing that with policies, trying to have our structure be in alignment. I don't know how to word that, but...
So I tell you if this captured, a current issue alignment and staying on top of needs?
Yeah.
Okay, what else did we do?
I think we do a really good job of meeting fiscal needs, such as our lunch program, the feeding of children during the summer. I mean, it's just outstanding.
Yeah, I think our home for the service program is excellent.
Oh, it's, yeah, for the service department, yeah. I would say, to that point, and to what Ann said, I think the corporation, one thing I've been really impressed with is the corporation has done such a good job in the face of challenges, right? So changing demographics in terms of the community. What I mean by that is, like, just lost people, right? Like, we've done a really good job of maintaining a level of fiscal responsibility that has allowed us to keep programming as best for kids, right? So we really, I think about, you know, the early college program at our high school, and early college career center, and that, that's incredible, the things that we've been able to put in. To the point, LSP, the things there, and all of that. I mean, all of that is wonderful for the community, for our kids, and the fact that we can maintain those things based on a mutual difficulty. And that's the challenge moving forward too, is, you know, as we look at, you know, changing landscape of funding and what that looks like, how do we maintain programming is in the face of those challenges.
Does fiscal responsibility capture that, or do you want to elaborate on that? Does that, those things are afforded because of the fiscal responsibility?
For sure.
We, the Little Spartan preschool was funded, basically, by Title I money that was appropriated other places prior to Little Spartan preschool. And that was a decision that was made by previous administration. And, but it, when, when they decide, it was more teacher-focused as opposed to kids-focused. And now our title money is really focused on the, the kids. And I think, anytime you talk about fiscal responsibility, you have to think about what's in the best interest of the kids. And we only have a certain pot of money and how we choose to spend it. A previous administration cut the administrative budget almost by, over a quarter of a million dollars by retirements and, and people, people doing different jobs. So I think that, that on a, on an executive level, I think we've done a, a good job of that over the last few years by making people in the central office work a little harder, maybe, and, and, and have to wear more hats. The new finance director that we're doing, he's going to do finance, he does HR. There, where we had separate people involved doing those things, which were, it was a lot of money. So we had money being siphoned off in that, in that respect that now is going back to more in the classroom. And I, and I think that's the big thing, is we have a pot of money. How do we, how do we spend our money so it impacts the kids? How do we pay our classroom aides? How do we do our, our support staff to keep them? Because without that, we just don't function well. And I think that has to be, always has to be our priority.
Absolutely. So does making sure we notate fiscal, being fiscally responsible, but student-centered fiscal responsibility.
Absolutely, absolutely, student-centered.
Fantastic.
I think this is a positive, that's work in progress, transparency. And I think we were, you know, there's ups and downs in every administration. We had some ups in the previous administrations, and I think Jeremy's come in and is really focused on transparency too.
Absolutely. And there can be, there can be things that we're doing really well that also land on the, we could do better, right? We always want to be. So know that, that we may stay transparent to be on the other side of the coin. That doesn't mean we're not doing it right for the time being right now, but we can, can do better. What else? Let's see if we can capture a couple more things that we did really well. And these don't have to be the huge things, these can be small.
I think just the relationships that, that are Be The Change that, that we're doing, that Rebecca talked about at the last board meeting that's sponsored by Reed. This is a program for middle school kids where the eighth graders, where they come in. I don't know if your girls were involved with it a few years ago. I think probably they were. But it's, it's life-changing for a lot of our kids that have such needs to show that there are people that care and there, where they are is not necessarily where they're always going to be. But the relationships that those kinds of programs, like Be The Change in cooperation with Reed, really do make, really do make a difference with a very vulnerable group of people.
Absolutely. So relationships, the programs are affording that growth in those relationships.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Because you can't, you can't teach a kid if you can't reach a kid.
Absolutely. That's great.
I think for our administrative staff, when really tough decisions need to be made quickly, they do have a really good job of keeping the notion of kids first.
I think with, from my understanding, Jeremy, we've cut some of our discipline issues and managed those differently. Some of the discipline issues are looking different. I guess that's a way to put it.
That's great.
I don't know how to get to announce that.
Yeah, I think we made some progress this year. I think, I think attendance, we made some progress there this year. You know, I think, I think we're moving forward with those things.
I think one of those things on the...
Yeah. Yeah, and one thing that I would also put on there that is really, really, really important, that I think, that I think we're moving forward on, what we still have a lot of work to do, is just culture. And when I say culture, that's, that's such a deep rabbit hole. What I mean is, like, people feeling valued and respected, regardless of position or title. And I think, I think we've come a long way, we still have a long way to go. Because it's a very complex conversation, right? When you talk about, like, well, my salary's not what it needs to be, so I don't feel like I'm respected. Well, okay, but we have limiting factors, right? That, that, it doesn't mean I don't respect you as a human, it just, I, I, the pot, the pot of money is the pot of money, right? And so, so it's a complex conversation. But we always hope that our people feel like, be it any school operation is equipped to support and that their work is seen and valued. And I think we have been tried.
We have a very good relationship with our union. That's a definite.
Fantastic.
That's a big positive.
It was, yes.
Yeah.
At the top.
Really fortunate.
Yeah, for sure.
That's huge.
Oh, that's incredible.
Yeah, because if we didn't, we would be... And I, I think too, to culture, I think that we're doing a much better job in the community. Education in Fayette County, and I've been here for 40 years, was not perceived as something that was important. It was not valued as it needs to be, simply because of where we were. You could have, you could make a lot of money without any, without a great deal of education. So you have generational people that, that work very, very hard, but they weren't required to have the education to do that. And I think that's, that's a culture shift that, that takes a while, because we simply do not have the high-paying manufacturing jobs that we had. So it's incumbent on our students now to graduate from high school with a way to get a job, because they're not going to be guaranteed. They can go out to the shop and make a lot of money. We had 16-year-olds who could go to drop out of school that could make exorbitant amounts of money when, when the, when the factories were in town. And they're just not here. So that's been a community shift that, that takes, that takes a while.
Right, absolutely. For the sake of my O C D here, let's fill up this page before I go over to the other half. And then we'll strip that off there.
I think you could go on both because I feel like we should always be improving and learning with the safety of the kids. I feel like the staff are really key on that and do a really good job of keeping our kids safe.
Great, absolutely. And that's one of those things that has to evolve with the changing times, right? And we're going to have to have the same safety requirements that we do now.
Along with that, I have a good relation with law enforcement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the SROs are wonderful.
Yeah, that's.
And with that, you know, those SROs in the building, they, you know, they talk to our students, so they begin trust with them and.
Which isn't just good for school, it's good for life.
Right, yeah. Because. The positive influence that they have.
Absolutely.
There's so many kids prior to that, the only time they saw the police officer was in a crisis situation. So now they see them and they talk to them, and so that, that bridge is not there. Also, we have, um, in every school now, we have a, a health assistant that helps out with, uh, uh, health issues and educational issues as far as what our kiddos need. Uh, we manage children much better with, um, things like diabetes or other, uh, physical ailments that require, uh, intervention during the school day. And I think that, that we do a really, we've not always had a health assistant in every building, and now we do, and I think that that's very important.
That's such a great point, um, health needs, um, does that also align with mental health?
Not, not so much, we do have, we do.
Well, we have mental health.
We have mental health.
Do we feel like that falls on our, our positive side?
Yes, yeah, we have Meridian and, yeah, Meridian and Centerstone partnering with us as far as that's concerned.
Really, we need to.
Okay. So that makes sense, it falls on both of those too, right? We're doing what we can now, but it may be something that we want, um, to expand. I'll pull another sheet here, do we have more positives? I like the positives.
I love our head start, not a little film, but we have a great, uh, school system, head start.
Yeah.
And it's unique because we're only one, two.
Yeah.
I think we're working hard on acknowledging and recognizing our staff in different ways. We did mention the difference makers, but also I think Jeremy's got a big push on professional development, not just for our teachers and non-ser, but for our administrators to get out in buildings and do something different.
Great. Any other positives that we want to add? And here, this always goes for any exercise we do, if something comes to you as we go along, these will be up on the wall, take a marker and jot it down because we want to capture it as we're going through these. So if there's, um, anything else that comes up, anything else on the positive side? Okay, we're going to go, and while this may feel negative, this negative is only to get us to the positive here. So I'm going to, while I'm working up, um, some more sheets here, think through, maybe we're fine, what are the biggest challenges that we are facing right now? What are our weaknesses?
Challenges.
Challenges, yes.
Pain points, even. Okay, throw them at me, so we're going to call these our pain points.
Communication with community, or I, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
Pain points. Okay, so you said, um, communication with community?
Community.
Okay.
Or no, I've got some version of that. No, I do, uh.
Can you, uh, Leslie, mind talking through kind of what lens are you thinking, just getting the knowledge out there or?
That's one.
Miscommunication potentially?
Uh, I think getting the knowledge out there. I don't know that the school corporation itself is miscommunicating, but I think it's being, it, it might be misheard or it's taken out of context or don't have the background understanding. I, I don't know, I don't know where, where, there's probably miscommunication, we may be at fault for that, I don't know.
But there seems to be a gap of.
There's a gap, and what, what the community may be aware of that we're doing or what they, how they perceive what we're.
Versus what we really are doing.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we just may not be communicating effectively and.
I think, if I can speak to that a little bit, I think there's, and this is probably a separate point, but I think one thing that's been a little bit, I don't want to say alarming, but just, I've had to get used to it, is there's, there's probably a, a culture of distrust between some community and school. Some of that might be, um, some of that might be factors that are outside of school's control that you live within. Um, but regardless, when you come to the table with that, uh, preconceived idea of distrust in your heart, then you hear things differently, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
And so you hear what you want to hear, and sometimes you hear motives that aren't there, right? And so, um, I think that could be the part of, part of that. Um, you know, just like the, the conversation about, about attendance, you know, like, number one, it was not, that's not, that's not accurate. Number two, like, we're not a government entity that's trying to throw you in prison, so like, there's a little bit of distrust there. We're trying to educate kids, right? If they're not there, we can't educate them. Like, that's a place, that's a place of the heart that is a good place, not a, we gotcha place, you know, like.
Yeah, but you know, what you're commenting about, and this goes to the post, I don't actually speak up, I know in the past, I don't know if the board, board members have done that, because I know Kim's on social media, if I see something that's negative, the parent who's complained that her child is being bullied by staff at the middle school. And, you know, that's alarming to me, it's like, okay, what's going on, send it to Kim, Kim knows everybody in the community, so she knew the person who made the post, and she'll make a personal call. She'll follow up to say, hey, what's happening? We want to know.
Sure.
And that's a positive, so where I'm saying.
Let's do it.
But I, I mean, we can't do that for everybody because a lot of those things are not done in a public forum where we can hear what people think. But I do like that you have done that. I think I've reached out to you two or three times, and you've called that parent, you've gotten it cleared up, or they've come in, remember we had somebody in a board meeting that came and they were going to speak out at the public comments about something they didn't like?
Sure.
And they did put it on the note, and Cindy caught it, got it to you, and you met with that parent before the meeting even started, and it got me in.
Absolutely.
So I do think admin is good problem solvers if we can.
So I, I feel some outrage over here on our positive side, so what then do we think, um, how do we label that on the, a pain point side? Um, is it maybe that they're only external before they go internal? What is the pain point in that struggle?
I think they go external before they go internal.
But I, I think going back to this trust, that's what I was about to say.
Yeah.
Going, going back, the Fayette County School Corporation has not been user-friendly in the past. And, and when it was, and the whole culture has just so shifted, and I've been here for 40 years, uh, away from an industrial base with the factories and the like. And I think that that cultural shift, you know, you have parents that say, well, uh, I didn't like school either, I didn't like math, I didn't like this, the teachers treated me badly. Um, they project this onto their kid when their kid comes home and says, well, I hate math, or my teacher's mean to me, and the, and the parent goes, yeah, they were mean to me too. And so it's not a good thing, but it, it's very real in that it's, it's happened, and to change that culture is, is going to take some time. And I think a lot of times when we're talking about pain points, it's discipline. Because how we have to discipline children now is not how we were able to do it 20 years ago or even five years ago. We're doing a lot of things with restorative, and a lot of people don't get that at all. I think we need to do a much better job in explaining that, you know, it's like, we have children that are literally beaten when they get out of line. So if you don't beat your kid or reduce them in some way, you are not disciplining them. So when the school gets away from the kinds of punishments, the, the kinds of behavioral controls, you know, well, why give a kid timeout? Why, why are you doing this thing? So I think that, that that's, that's important, and classroom management is very different than it used to be because we do things differently. Teachers, kids don't sit in lines very much anymore. You know, it's much more an interactive process, but I think if your mindset is such, well, my kid should be at school and doing this, 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 and this, it's just very difficult, um, and how to handle chronic, chronic discipline problems. Like, why don't we spell these kids? Why don't we have other programs for these chronic behavioral issues? Because parents have complained, I've taken my kid out of the school because I'm sick and tired of so many, some students in this classroom disrupting the educational process. And I'm not blaming the teachers, it's just a matter of resources and where we can take these chronic behavioral issues and how we deal with them and try to integrate them back without, it's always a balancing act.
Absolutely. So we have distrust, and I think this is probably as well, there's going to be distrust in the administration, there's going to be in our classroom. Generational is one of the big notations, and you're right, you know, if we have parents that are saying those things, that adds to it. Discipline, you know, if we have distrust in the way you all are disciplined, educators are disciplining even the space. So we can probably say distrust in every facet, we're going to find that in there, right? That's always going to be a, a pain point. We also can only control what we can control on there, but we can do the things that, uh, we do really well to help combat that, being transparent, communicating in our community, things like that. Redhead Chris.
I, I think our community image is poor, and in a sense, you know, sometimes we don't get the best teachers because, well, all our teachers are great, but we can get more if they, they have to drive, you know? They don't feel a need to, to move here, I, I, I don't know if I'm getting that right, but just the image of, you, you, community, there's nothing to do.
The appeal.
Yeah.
The vacuum, the appeal.
Community center would be amazing.
Oh, when the, yes.
Stuff, stuff, stuff for kids to do, you know, what, what, uh, we don't do enough promoting the, we are a smaller community, we don't have a lot of things. You're not going to get what you get when you live in the city. We are an hour from three municipal areas, so, and we do have advantages of living in a smaller community. Uh, and I, but I, as to Chris's point, I don't think people, I, I, I don't think people understand that, and when we unfortunately had had a history of not hiring people that were local.
Sure.
And, and I think we're, we're working very hard, but, but Leslie knows, if you lived in Fayette County, you probably weren't going to get a job under previous administration. So we got a bad rap with Ball State, we got a bad rap with IU East.
Sure.
And we're working through these things, but these are not quick fixes.
Sure.
We're working on it, but transparency.
Yeah.
Um, and we're working on it too, it's a positive and negative, but being more proactive than reactive to things.
We don't have a C M S R teacher.
I'm sorry.
We don't have an art teacher at this.
Yeah.
Nope.
That's a real, like, a challenge.
No, you said art, I'm sorry.
No, we have no.
And we didn't post it, we just, it was not out there.
I know.
Teacher shortage in general.
Well, it's not a lot of the art association, just see if they.
And, and, and also, I think we can do a better job of, of accommodating our new people to come in, and if, we have a lot of new teachers that are just, and, and I think we need to do a better job with mentoring them, putting them with a, with a teacher. And not, not on their, their intellect, but on their skill set as to classroom management, um, how all of this stuff evolves. Uh, uh, very, very simple things like grading and getting, getting in touch with parents and, and just classroom, classroom discipline and classroom management issues for our very new people. Because I should have apologized to those kids that I had the first year that I taught because I was not good. I knew the subject area, but I didn't have those, that other skill set that you develop just with experience. And if you have someone coming into your classroom and saying, hey, what you're doing is okay, but it's, maybe it's not working really well, try this because this is, you have a plan A, B, C, D, E, F, and by the time you taught as long as I do, you're down to X, Y, and Z.
Sure.
To how to do things, and I think we can do a better job.
Hearing about that.
Teach. And I would like, I don't think we have enough business partners.
No.
And I think our social media could be ramped up a little, celebrating what our kids are doing, whether that's in sports or other activities, um, that they're choosing to do. I think celebrating the kids, I feel like we could do a little bit better of that.
And have all the principals send newsletters, I mean, they probably are their students, but we don't see all the principals newsletters, so that's just a missing link that, that piece of communication. Something simple.
Give it a whirl.
But, um, that one, and, um, you know, what you were saying, oh, and then individual schools on their Facebook pages also highlighting kids, some are better than others. And, and that's great, I mean, I understand, we're not all clone, I don't want every principal being the same, but I do think, let's share the story.
Yeah. Uh, another thing, our Fayette County School Corporation website is not easy to navigate at all, and I realize that I am technologically challenged, but it's, it's, it's very difficult, and it's not kept very current sometimes. Don't even ask parents about Eventlink.
The sports athletics and the calendars and that affecting the parents when events are happening. And I know things change, but it's not up.
Remember those little foldable things that.
No, no, no.
And, and I've heard, we got away from that since the digital age, but I stuck that in my wallet.
Well.
Did you, were you young, you know, ten?
Yeah.
You seen the Christmas cards?
No, no, but, but they, they didn't, and now you go, you go to Eventlink, and it's, Eventlink is not reliable, and it, the thing of it is, you have to be on that platform the entire, it, it doesn't tell you when something's changing. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a tough one because I don't know if that's changing, just because that's what we use now for, the officials association uses it, I think, I had to say, uses it. So if I can get back big picture real quick, I, I, one of the things that we talked about in our correctional team, um, that was really important, when it comes to the parents, it comes down to distrust, it comes to a lot of those things, is how do we make school matter? Um, you know, we lose 125 kids a year to virtual school. Um, I don't know how many homeschool children we have, again, not disrespecting homeschool, I think there are families.
Yeah, but doesn't that also, the student doesn't keep track of those kids very well?
Uh, they probably, they probably, they're supposed to have a homeschool number and those types of things, but we don't necessarily know, if that makes sense. Um, we know when they withdraw.
Do you know the families that are homeschooling?
Because they don't have. Do you follow up with people that choose to homeschool?
If we know, like, if we have a student that is withdrawing, especially.
Then you know.
From our schools, then they, because we have to do an exit form, if they tell us that they're withdrawing for that reason, then we do meet with them as administration and try to give them alternatives. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I do like the positive about now that we've, you know, we have that policy, not homeschool kids can participate if they take one class and they can participate in a sport. I think that's a real positive, and I don't know how well that's communicated to homes, if we've got however many, let's say we have 100 homeschool parents, how many of them know that?
Well, that's, that's just new.
Yeah, that's what'll come.
And our homeschool kids, like, they don't get the camps and stuff, so if we could get those camp forms online so they can turn them out to get them, because I've had a lot.
And then communicate with them, and I don't think we have, do we have one organized homeschool group that, I know there's one pockets.
Yeah.
Right, where they'll get together for our music or something, um, but I don't think we're doing a good job of identifying.
We do the school board page on social media, we could add those.
Yeah.
Do we think that that all falls back to communication? I mean, that's a different type of void of disconnect.
I think we as a board have a lot to work on, on communicating and understanding each other and where our points are coming from.
That's a really good.
Because we all, I mean, we all get along, you know, and we all can agree to disagree, but I think coming in a way to be able to do that, we have to work on that.
I, I think we need to do exit interviews, uh, for, for, for seniors in high school.
Yes.
I, I think this is vital because.
Which she said they do exit, they do exit interviews.
For the homeschool.
Achievement personnel.
You mean personality.
No, I mean, I mean.
Do we have a person that does that interview?
Well, I think we need to do exit interviews for personnel, but I also think we need to do exit interviews for seniors in high school.
What they like, what they didn't.
What, what they like, what they didn't like, the changes, because, um, I go to a lot, frankly, I go to a lot of graduation parties, and, and, you know, are you, you know, congratulations, you graduated, man, I'm so happy to be out of there. Well, why? Why are you happy to be out of, out of school? And a lot of it is pretty normal stuff, but a lot of it is stuff that we could do better as far. as far as preparing them in so, in so many respects. I think that they could tell us a lot about what we need, what their perceived needs are. And certainly as younger people, they're going to be, have a different perspective. And I think that that perspective is going to be, be interesting too when we put curriculums together. You know, it's like, I wish I had had a class in this because I need this. And why isn't this?
We do have a principals advisory committee and you participate in those meetings as well. So, that's something they started last year.
High school kiddos, and what I would like to do eventually is have those kids rotate at the table for meetings where they can be on a reporting part or they can report on the students. This is what's important to us, give us, and if they ask them, they can provide feedback and just to give them a place of leadership at the table, not obviously decision-making of course, but, but yeah, trying to give them more of a voice.
Well, and I think the more input that we give them, the more involved they will have a tendency to be because they don't feel like, they feel like they're part of the process. And particularly for the older kids, it's like, we're, we're young adults at this point in time. We, we like having a little input into where we are and where we need to go. And I, and I think the issues that you're working on with, with guidance right now are going to be huge as far as this is concerned.
I related to communication, I was just thinking of something. You had mentioned before that part of this will include a survey and a QR code and all that. One of the concerns I would have on the surface is there's a fair amount of people who want to be heard. And right now, the avenue for that is actually speaking up conversation. And we know too that the minority voices tend to be the loudest. So, I don't know how we can do that with fidelity where, and maybe that's the roles on the principals too, to, in their newsletters where it's a more neutral space to say, hey, we'd really like you to fill this out, I just get worried. We put that on a board, social media page, social media.
Sure.
We're probably going to attract, and not that we don't want to hear those voices, we do, we need to hear that. We also, I would like a balance.
Absolutely.
The other thing, and I think Eric brought it up, is we don't celebrate things well. And we don't, I mean, we're starting to, obviously the difference makers is huge. But I think everyday celebrations about what makes Fayette County school great, which goes into this whole thing, I think we need to do a better job on marketing Fayette County schools. Because we have so much to celebrate and we are, and really all school corporations are doing really wonderful things. Somehow those everyday things, everyday teachers that have a relationship with their kids, we don't even look at that. We look at, oh, but that teacher didn't do this for this kid instead of what they did do. So, I don't, I don't know how we do.
Yeah, so celebrations, to know why we are great, toot our own horn, right? We need to do more of that.
Yeah, we talk about that a lot as well as like if we don't tell our story, somebody's going to tell it for us. And how to segregate, yeah, how to segregate. I want to, just two really big things, big ideas again. So, I, I think, again, I'm trying to go high level here because I don't want to get too much with like action steps because we, we'll talk about that later. But, but number one is we, we have a lot of kids that just don't have hope for the future.
No.
And I think that's, I think that's a result of poverty, I think it's a result of substance abuse, I think it's a result of a lot of those things, there's just not a hope beyond the walls of their current conditions and beyond Fayette County. So, how do we give kids a worldview that's different? How do we give them a sense of hope for the future? Or how do we allow them to know that they have purpose in mind? All of those things are so incredibly important. And number two is the substance abuse piece, right? Looks as we roll on, that's a huge challenge for us in our community. And as we look at health markers across the state of Indiana, Fayette County is literally at or to the bottom in almost every major category. So, overall health, and I say health as in social emotional health, physical health, substance abuse, all of those things, like we are, we are literally.
Food insecurity.
Of all counties in the state, we are at the bottom, right? So, so that is a huge challenge for us because we as a school have to step into places of providing for kids, providing social emotional support for kids that is beyond, way beyond just educating a child, right? But we do it and we do it well, but it's still a challenge. And so, I think that's, I think those pieces are all related to making school matter because we can provide that support, we can provide that if kids are, if they attend, if they are in virtual school and like we can take care of those kids and provide of those things and give them the hope and like, I think that's a very complex conversation, but high level, I think that's super, super impressive.
I think we do very well with our outreach, but I think we could do better identifying those factors and knowing where our kids could use a little bit more help and being able to try to figure that out. I think we do a great job.
Maybe I did find those that need that help.
Yes.
Teachers have.
And I do think our high school counseling department, we're in the process of kind of rebuilding that. And in their defense, I think of so many responsibilities.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I don't even know if there's still proctoring exams, but there was a time they did that, you know?
We reduced a lot of that.
Yeah, but, but even, you know, the legislature puts a lot of things out in school counseling and we haven't really had a good alignment there. I think that would manage some of the other things like exit interviews and all.
Teachers have always asked in local parentis, I mean, this is in the place of parents. And I think that scope has changed so drastically over the last few years that, and we'll have people, particularly people in my generation coming back and saying, well, why are we doing all of this stuff? You know, we didn't do this when my kids were there. Why do we feed them breakfast? Why do we feed them lunch? Why do we do all this stuff? And it's because our kids need it now because they're not getting it someplace, they're not getting it someplace else.
Which before we eat lunch too, I think with the health and having kids like safely doing activities, I think we could do a better job of making our gyms available, like that some other schools I know do where they can come in and use them. Obviously, we'd have to have like.
Space availability.
We do.
Yeah.
We have a facility usage.
Like, I mean, just like kids come in and use the gym, like to do.
No, 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 we have like organized practice. You're saying letting your kids.
Yeah.
Just play.
We have to have supervision, but yeah. With constraints.
Yeah, as long as we can, you know, lively and that's all covered, yeah.
I think like a summer, something for the kids to do in the summer. They need to use something to give these kids with the stuff.
Well, and the Parks Department tries with summer discovery and the like, but again, that, again, that cost. Another thing, people have said, when we fill out this form online, there's a real fear of the lack of privacy, that there's going to be retaliation, that somehow somebody will find out what I said and retaliate against me because of that. And again, that goes to the trust issue, but if we want good data, we have to have good surveys.
Sure.
And, and it's like, there's, I, there's just this general feeling that if I put something negative down there and somebody is going to find out that I put something negative down there and I'm going to have to pay for that down the road.
And that goes back to distrust, right?
Whether it be for my child, whether it be in an employment situation, they're just very, very hesitant. They're just very hesitant to do that. And I think that that's something, again, the, the trust issue, do we listen to them? Do we value what they have to say?
The positive to that is Jeremy's doing a good job getting into the buildings and building that trust too.
Especially when the students are knowing who he is and giving them high hives and getting them cars.
No, but he's like the Pied Piper going in, out at Fayette Central when we were out there with the difference makers, we walked in the building and all these little kids are going, that's Mr. Duncan, and they were going and giving him hugs, it was wonderful.
I think we should do a little bit better too of marketing outside of Fayette County of what we offer instead of just inside. I mean, we have the Career Center that I did not know offered so much stuff until we took a tour and I was like, oh my God.
Oh, they're fantastic.
Yeah, so I think getting that out there.
And I think we did a really good job at graduation this year, recognizing those kids with, that got the certificates and the like from the Career Center because a, somebody can graduate from the Career Center with a CNA license and be able to go to work immediately. People in welding, good grief, they can go in, and in cosmetology, they can take the exam while they're there. And these are things that you can go and get a skill, you can get a job immediately and then go on, you know, beyond, but the machine trades people. Wow, it's, it's fant, it's fantastic.
One last thing I'd say is I think that we are not going to be perfect. And school corporation, I mean, we're the biggest employer and we are a system and we have bureaucracy. I mean, I think as much as, I think there's lots of attempts to reduce that and make it more of this family team, whatever you want to say, but the fact of the matter remains, we're always going to have challenges. And so, you know, I was sharing earlier that I had a friend who had issues and they got her to resolve, but she just was disappointed. And yeah, some things aren't going to get resolved fully to, to where we want them, probably to where Jeremy or Kit wants them, but I don't know how to communicate that sometimes. You know, if a parent says, well, it's just not right and it needs to be fixed. Okay, well, there's many layers to that, like to get that fixed, you know, you might have, your child may have a teacher who just doesn't mesh with your child. I mean, that's going to happen. And there's nothing we can really do about that except to try to plug in a few supports where we can. So, I don't know if that's something we even need to communicate or maybe that's just us a board recognizing, we're not going to get it all right.
And I, and you can tell me if this is not hitting the mark on your point, as I, all the things I'm not supposed to do as a facilitator, as I stand here as a parent of four students, three of which are in the school system, when I hear that, I hear that sometimes they just want to be heard. So, is it maybe when you can't do actions, we are just hearing them?
Yes.
And again, sorry, that is a hat I'm not supposed to put on here, but that is what I hear when you say that, is sometimes it's when we can't act, we can just hear.
Yeah, right, which I think we can all learn and we can understand that. But that still leads to parents feeling powerless or feeling like they weren't heard even though we are hearing them.
Sure.
I think sometimes what breaks that down is the lack of parents not going through the chain of command.
Yeah.
Because they immediately go to you or they go to me, I don't have the information. And then it has to sit for 24 hours because I have to find out the information. Whereas if they would have just gone directly to the building teacher or the administrator, then the issue gets resolved quickly and there's not that 48-hour turn where they haven't felt heard and they're responding emotionally and then it feels, it just gets icky.
So, the parents handling it correctly on their end, they expect you all to handle it.
And that's adults.
And you still might not like the answer. You might go to your school principals and principal and they tell you, well, I can't do that. This is, you know, that's going to affect other students. Well, that's not fair to my students. Well, you're right, but, so I don't, I don't know if that's a communication.
Sure. So, it goes back to that trust.
We will always have a, I think, a problem as far as our teachers have with diversity in the.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And it goes back to community image and I've went to, you know, more Hispanic teachers or black teachers and I've talked to job fairs, I've talked to, and they just said, Connersville just, I've heard about Connersville and I just don't like it. Well, what have you heard about it? Well, nothing to do. But, yeah, it's, it's always going to be an issue.
So, diversity for our students and who are teaching our students also?
Yes.
Staff and.
Teachers, yeah, that's good, yeah.
And that maybe.
That's what I hear.
Does that lead back to community image, right?
Yes, exactly.
Well, I will say that we've improved in, I don't know how many years, but we have more male elementary level.
I was going to bring that up, yes, that's.
What was that, I'm sorry?
We have more male, male elementary teachers. We don't have a ton, I don't know.
No, we have more than we've had.
Do we feel like that's a positive?
Oh, definitely a positive.
Yes.
I wish we.
And, and we have, we have more, more people, more people of color. And we have males of color, which I think.
Yeah, I think we actually have more males of color than females of color.
Probably, I think so, and, 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 and I can, I can speak strategically to, we have males of color at the middle school and I'll speak to Conrad, Conrad's wonderful. He, he's worked so well with the kids, he coaches and a lot of the, a couple of the really hardcore discipline issues, he's handled incredibly well because he, it's somebody, he's walked in their shoes, so he gets it.
I think we could do better at being more, and I think we do a great job, but I think being more acceptable of all staff and students and their disabilities, accepting, the acceptance.
Accepting of disability?
Yeah.
I know we have just a few minutes left, I see the filter, it's not lost to me, I'm not going to let you all make me look like a liar, I'm going to let you go as soon as it's ready.
On that point, Erica, I would like more education and I don't know if that means Maggie's coming in more often and sharing quarterly.
Yes.
Just, I don't know, from a life skills class to, you know, visually impaired students.
Yeah.
What they're doing.
Yeah, I know.
Because I don't know much about special ed and you know so much, but it's your own personal experience.
So, maybe it's not as much the accepting, it's knowledge. We just need more knowledge based on it.
To begin with.
I mean, not a positive, I think our special education throughout the whole entire school system is phenomenal.
And that's, see, I don't even know about that.
Anywhere else.
Yeah, so I want to know about that.
I mean, because, I mean, there's always things that we need to work on and improve, but the ground level.
Absolutely. Absolutely. One thing, Leslie, I forgot, I forgot it about six times, but I've remembered it seven now there. And your point on the surveys, I'm going to loop right back around there, something I want to notate on that. But I wanted to ask if, and this kind of puts your hat on if you are a parent in the community, if you, as you all live here, what is something you all hear coming up? And that's maybe come into some of those misconceptions, or is there something that is a recurring?
About schools?
Yeah. Is there, is there, you know, Chris just notated, we're not appealing, it's, it's not diverse, those are things we're hearing. Are there some things, this is usually from your experience, but is there things we've seen unfortunately on social media that is one of those? Is there something that seems to be something that continually comes up in the community?
The, the inmates are running the institution and that's something that, that's just a comment. And I don't think that's true, but in individual situations where there are discipline issues and for whatever reason, they're not handled well and we're always going to run, run into some of that. But I think it was, there's just an educational piece there that we do not discipline the way we used to. We do not have the same kinds of consequences, but I think parents get very upset and pull their kids out when they have kids disturbing their, where do you draw the line where you say the, the good of the many outweighs the good of the one?
And does that go back to distrust? It's distrust and, and the reason I ask that is because if we continue this and if there are any more to add, I would say most times that they're going to go back to one of these main things and that may be distrust. Doesn't mean no right.
Kind of about like you guys have kids in the school, what are parents saying?
Anything in the spaces, is there anything that you all, I, I know people come up to you in the grocery store and they get you.
Bullying is always, they actually speak out, somebody's always talking about their kids.
Bullying is a big.
And I don't, I don't think there's a, I mean, the legal definition of bullying for schools is very different from what a parent thinks.
I think we handle those situations very quickly.
I think the school does, but she was just asking what's the public's perception.
Counseling was a big one, but Jeremy's moving on there.
Anything else on the pain point side that we feel? Because at the end, these pain points are what craft your plan, right? These are the things that we are going to overcome and hopefully three years from now when we have that strategic plan, these are on your strong, these are on your strengths over there. Any other thing in regards to our pain points?
I think we just need to recognize that our teachers are dealing with so many things in a very short period of time. Our elementary school day. Our elementary school day is one of these shortest and the needs of our kids, whether they are kids with IEPs or in trauma kids or at-risk kids, they're just, we're asking them to do so much and we've got to give them the grace to do it because they're not always going to get it right the first time.
Absolutely.
And we're not going to see that big increase in achievement. It's, it's that doing things and doing it better each day.
Absolutely.
And giving them the grace to do that. And I think sometimes, even me, I'm guilty of that, I want to see those scores up here, but sometimes I need to take a step back and look at all of the things that they're dealing with on a daily basis. And a lot of times the kids' emotional or social needs take over some of those academic needs. So it's, it's giving them the ability to find that balance and giving them the support that they need as well.
Absolutely. Do we think that maybe that ties into the celebration, celebrating the little things? Maybe that helps them get, you know, highlighting the things that they are able to see the wins in?
I think we do that, I think it's just, it's a perception.
Got it.
I just don't think sometimes people understand all the things that we're asking teachers to do today. And if you don't live it, you don't know. And I can't even say that because I don't live their lives every single day.
I remember when we went, took Jane to Grandview and we went to a teacher's class who, I mean, her kids were at a special and they're, she had 18 students and she said nine of her kids had incarcerated parents. I mean, that alone is a huge lift for that teacher, half her class has incarcerated parents.
And I think they, they do, they do the best they can and I think they're working harder than they have several works.
Yeah.
And I don't want that to get lost.
Using the technology that we already have.
Absolutely.
We can improve on that. Because we have things in our hands, we're just.
So as we wrap, and I'm, again, I'm going to leave these up here, jot these down if you're eating lunch and something comes up. I can't talk right now, I think. And the very last, I want to give anybody an opportunity, anybody else have any other thought, they want to get out right now. Okay, and the last thing I wanted to do, again, because I'm going to forget it for a seventh time here, Leslie, we were talking about that survey and kind of how we. Again, the QR code and just were, essentially we're opening the doors for all of that to come in. And the reality is, we are going to do that. I mean, there is no way, if we truly want to get the voice of the community, we do. But what we can do is we can set that survey, we can have these session, sessions within the constraints that we can control. We obviously are going to set those questions on the survey, right? We will do, you know, questions where we are going to get the answers, but on the other side, we're going to be prepared. You already know we're going to get quite a lot of negative because that is their voice. But that sometimes could be the difference of we're hearing them personally or we're hearing them slash seeing them on social media. You know, maybe if we give them an outlet to tell us, they say that we're not asking, we ask and maybe we will receive. But the reality is, we are going to get that. And our option is, we either don't send that out and we keep it in the confines and then when the community asks us, you never asked me. We did, maybe you chose not to do the survey, but we did ask. So that is the reality of it is, there's no other way to put it, we're going to get the negative, we're going to see the things. Hopefully we get it back in the form of an anonymous survey instead of seeing it on the social media as much. But again, we can't control those people who are going to do that no matter what. So I, I wanted to bring that up and I know you all know that, but that is something we want to keep in, in mind. Go ahead.
Jeremy's working on it, but I know like vaping and those kind of things coming into the school. And I know Dustin had looked into some of those sensors and all that too.
Vaping.
The vaccine, if you wish.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
And that's the difficulty in that nobody is supposed to, over, under 18 is supposed to have that, but if the kids are vaping at home and then whatever.
Absolutely.
We need to break for lunch.
Yep, absolutely.
So I'm going to go make a phone call real quick about, we're at a construction meeting, I need to make my call real quick. So Matt's here and has an awesome lunch prepared, there's a, is it, what kind of eat is it?
It's blood of the Royal State.
Oh, wow.
Green beans. Beef, cheese.
Oh yeah, you're the, you're the fridge.
It does. With meal be televised, not on gravy.
Are you pausing?
And this is all, yeah, can you pause?
Yeah, let's pause.
All right, well, we have fantastic course go, Rob. This is fantastic information and I wanted, before we dive into the next, take a look at all of this positive and even if it's laying on our pain point, this becomes our positive when we're six to eight months down the road. So this is not going to be lost and just so you all know, all of this information is going to be cataloged. And then it will be shared out with you throughout the process. This is going to be that foundational information that is cataloged and shared with the directional team. This is not going to be lost in any way, shape or form. So I never want you, I've been in sessions where we do all this work and then they take these big old sheets paper and they crumple them and they toss them in the trash and you're like, why in the world did I just spend all the time? I'm sure this is going to go to my house, I'm going to catalog it, I'm going to have this put all over my office and I'm going to do it. It's not going to be lost, I promise you on that. What we're going to dive into now is what we are going to stand on as our absolute top priorities. This is what we have to focus on. The way we're going to frame this is if we don't focus on this, it's at a detriment to the corporation. These are those top priority items, what we have to focus on for the success of the corporation, for the district. These are going to be the top priority, most important. We also want to keep in mind that we need to stay high level here. When we're thinking this, we want to think things like enrollment, graduation rate, you know, the success of our students. What we got in the weeds and we have really minute, specific pain points over here, this is top priority. So just keep that in mind as we're framing, this is what matters the most to us. Yourselves as board members, but the corporation as a whole. And so what we're going to do here is I'm going to ask you just in much the same ways to throw out those top priority items. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to start seeing some themes organically bubble up. A lot of times those are going to be around engagement, literacy, communication, staff retention may be a big one that bubbles up, that's a, a theme, equity, things around our academics, of course, are going to, but we may see some specific here. And then what we're going to do is, and this goes back to kind of that process, we're going to use these lovely dots and we are going to, on our own personal choice, once we have these lists, we're going to go and we're going to dot those top priorities after we see this. You know, this is something that's a standout for me. And we're going to see probably some trends where there are going to be topics that have multiple dots on them. And what that does is that's going to organically start bubbling up our themes and that is that foundation of our strategic plan. While it won't be the end-all, be-all here, this is going to start bringing them to the surface. And then the transition to the priorities are what we want to focus on, then we're going to talk the values that align with them and that's how we're going to keep those top priorities in mind. So I'm going to ask you, I'm going to give some prompting questions here, but I want you just in the same way that we did before, to start throwing out, get a color that doesn't bother your eyes here, we'll see if this grates. Throwing out what our top priorities for the corporation are. So remember big picture. Do you want to kick us off?
I think you said enrollment, I mean.
Enrollment.
Student, student retention.
What else?
Increased attendance.
I'm sorry.
Increased attendance. High graduation rate. What our students are feeling happy, successful.
Successful students. What do you think are the most urgent needs we have in the district? And some of those may be our enrollment, maybe something that isn't urgent, but what, think of some of those names out of those. Urgent, we have to get our hands on, we have to try to stop the bleed in some situation. What are things that are those?
Well, some of our test scores, but that's, or our achievement scores, but that's particular to grade levels, like, and I can't remember everything and also some of our scores are average. So I, I don't know where we stand as of today with high learned and high rate, but seeking more improvement.
Continuous growth.
Pardon?
Continuous growth.
Yeah.
Don't judge my stuff on here, it looks right up here in the conversation.
We're, we're on a roll with this, but graduation pathways continue to be, I mean, we have to keep the focus on those. I can state, we're boring that anyway.
I look at things that are imminent, like right here, which is a little, a little aside from like big picture thinking, but just really, really important would be the graduation requirements and making sure we build systems of support that kids can be successful in those places, such as workforce learning opportunities. Those types of things have to, we've got work to do, a lot of work to do. So that's imminent. Top priority two is, is understanding the financial landscape, its effects on future planning. I think that's right, right here too. Obviously, we're in the midst of tons of different projects, that's where I was at during launch of his own call about construction projects and finding the finish line for some, why would we try to find the launching pad for? It's like, oh. So those are, those are what we're doing for me.
And I think our debt service plan is, is, well, that will, they're connected.
Sure.
But, you know, right now, we have a debt service rate and we want to maintain that. Are we going to have to raise it? What are we going to have to do in order to manage our debt and still be able to do all the things?
I think if I would, if I would go back to those things, it was right from me, from like a philosophical perspective, I, I, top priority for me is forever speaking the perfect way, knowing there are moving skills and giftings and how they potentially fit in the world. Having a sense of belonging, I think belonging matters. I think people need to know if they have value, I think in, in, as they belong, if you will. And in that hope piece, like, we, there's a hope for kids and hopefully it means for us, but that is a hope for a picture that's better than their current.
About our teachers' mental health, they do it.
I'm sorry, you're.
The teachers' mental health.
Yeah. What else is the top priority?
Communication skills, just to kind of across the board. How do we, how do we communicate better amongst ourselves, with parents, with, with kids? Just keeping all those lines of, of communication open because they, if we don't, then we're across, we're, we're completely across purposes.
Absolutely, and the reason, if we look, we know communication that has landed on one of our, you know, where we are, maybe the need, it's one of our pain points, it's one of our top priorities. So we can start seeing, that seems to be a common thread coming through, communication in all facets, right? Internal, external, absolutely. What else?
Drawing people in.
Appealing, drawing people to the corporation? Yeah.
I think that's.
Kids and staff.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And that's a, that's a big conversation, Chris's point earlier about, who do we need perception? And how do we build bridges rather than walls with people that, like I met with EDG yesterday, we had this very same conversation about like attracting business to town, right? Well, how do you do that, right? Public perception matters, having a good, solid school corporation matters, being progressive in our thinking, do unique things that sell the community matters. And how do we, as a school corporation, have a seat at the table for those conversations? Because we're a big part of that and building bridges with Mayor Frank and with, with EDG and with other organizations and entities and knowing where we fit. And to Leslie's point earlier, as far as industry too, I mean, the reality of it is, our kids will be the future employees of our local organizations. This is what I talked to Reed Health about last week, like we want our, our kids to be able to have a pathway into your facilities to be employees if they choose to be. So what do we have to do to better prepare them for success there? But, but being, having a seat at the table for those conversations and I think that has to be a priority of working together with other entities so we're not in silos.
I know that this is all part of our strategic plan, but this connection between the board, admin at central office, building administration and now with the teachers, so the same goals and objectives are driving everybody. So kind of that team, getting everybody together closer onto a team, so we're all speaking kind of the same language.
Absolutely, that cohesion and you're exactly right. It is part of, this is, to have a successful plan, this happens, right? I think I may have given the example when we were together, we hope that any given teacher in any one of your elementary spaces can say, this is my strategic plan, this is what I'm working towards, this is what the other teachers at Grandview are working towards, this is what the administration is working toward. We all have, now, we're going to go about it different ways, right? What I'm doing in a classroom space at East U is going to be different when somebody's doing at the high school or how you all are supporting it is going to be different, but we all have this common goal. So a successful plan will do just that, but that also should be the top priority. And how we make that happen is keeping that at the forefront. This is a great point. Let's see, on that, that is what we want to happen throughout that, across the board. If we didn't do something, if we were at, what would be a detriment to us if we did not address? Is there something, and I know we had some of those, you, I assume enrollments probably, if we don't try to do something there, but is there something that we can't afford to ignore?
I want to go back to Erica's comment sometime this morning, the board dynamics.
Yeah.
I think, you know, I always say this in therapy with families, when parents are contemplating divorce and they say, oh, we're so worried about our kids. It's like, if you guys are okay, your kids are going to be okay.
Sure.
If you can manage your relationship and communicate with your kids, yeah, they'll have, go through a change, but they will adjust. And I think that if we can get our heads together and understand each other and work well together, that's going to trickle across, not necessarily down, but across the board.
Absolutely. Can I, would it be correct, that's also cohesion for the board?
Yeah, it's separate category.
Absolutely, so this would be.
Like a board.
Put this notated separately, board cohesion and hopefully the exact same thing, just like we notated for all the, the staff and faculty, we want the strategic plan to help do that for you all. No matter what, you may have differing views on what the action is to get that, but we all have those same goals, which is your strategic plan. So that should help also by all means, that's a great point. What else? What is a top priority? And you can also think, we know there are things that are going to have effect externally, funding, things like that, but what are those top priority that we have? Maybe they're coming down from the state or the government level that we need to make sure that we have at the top of our mind.
I don't know if it's one, but I think like the salaries, we have to be competitive.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, and stay up there so that, you know, we're competitive and we get the best.
Yeah.
Our kids deserve the best.
Let's see, another thing that's imminent for us is facility planning. You know, you know, we currently have a structure that's about our winter schools and middle school, high school. We have Willis Parkland, we have SLC, then we have our, our first year as well. And, you know, there was a period of time, obviously, where Alphana and Orange closed. Do, do we, do we have to face that at some point in time in the near future, right? And I say that's a top priority, but just having, having a, a vision and a path forward with that. We can't, we can't forecast every possible thing that's coming our way in terms of financing and student enrollment, those kind of things, but if, if trends continue, right, we've got to have, we're going to have some hard decisions to make. Right? How about what that looks like because?
Well, and those kinds of things are so divisive in the community.
Yeah.
Because of, it got out of rumor a couple of years ago that we were having a meeting and we were going to close Fayette Central, which we weren't, but there were all kinds of people there because we were going to vote to close Fayette Central that night. And it was like, really? No? It was when we were doing our facilities thing and they were presenting us with issues in each, in each building that we had to address and certainly Fayette Central has some, but there was never anything. But the way, apparently from what I'm getting from people is that the way that the closings of Alphana and Orange were handled were not good as far as the entire community was concerned. There were just a lot of, people felt very unheard at, at that particular situation. And then what happened to the properties afterwards created another whole, another whole round of issues.
How about continuing education and our resources for educators and staff? And that's from, you know, your environmental services all the way up. You should do it on children all day.
Well, and that's even a legislative priority about the, the science of reading that teachers have to do.
Yeah, I'm sure. Continue education, absolutely. Continuing education, absolutely. What should students and families experience more consistently, more consistently, excuse me?
More consistency.
Well, I, I would, I mean, one of the things I was going to mention under challenges, but I don't really know how it works. But I know when we were looking at Jeremy's evaluation, there was a question about something about how Jer, how Jeremy guides administrators and dealing with parents or something like that. But I think it's got to be a challenge building principles to get parents into their building. And we have such high progress population. And any of us who have been involved with our kids in school know they do better when, when we can be involved. So I think it's a priority on some level for the community to know how to interact with schools, how to not be intimidated to go into a building or how, how, how important they are. I don't know how we import that to the community because I do think there are many who believe they don't care about us, they're just going to do what they want to do and, and I don't know. Yeah, like, like Fayette Central, like they do the movie nights and they, they're opening the doors to the, if we can maybe get everyone on board. I'm going to look with similar ideas of getting the parents in so they get the face to face and.
I know schools try this.
They do.
I don't know what that RC nine, whatever.
Do you think it goes back to the relationship piece? Is it, is it, is it on that?
And I think also, speaking from K through six is a whole lot easier because typically, the kids are in, one, a lot of our kids are in the same elementary school for an extended period of time. When you get to middle school, which is a two-year period, getting parents in, some of them, by the time they hit the age of 12 or 13, they're kind of over it and, and rightly so. But how to get parents involved at, at that really crucial level, things that we can do. We always have this thing, if you feed them, they will come. And, and having those kinds of things available, and it's even more challenging on the high school level because the perception is that the kids are, are, are young adults, which they are, but that, that parental piece, that guidance piece is still really an important, a really important part of it.
So involvement, right? Okay, perfect. What else? Are there any other top priorities?
Yeah, there's one, there's a huge one over there. And I think there's, just safety, excuse me, safety.
Safety, yeah, absolutely.
Because it has to be above all else, parents when they drop their kids off before they go to the building. It's, they're safe and, safe physically, safe emotionally. And we have adults that are making good choices and are good to fit influences on them. Safety has to be there.
And that may go back to, that's also been a threat that's went through. If we don't feel that, that leads to distrust, right? That, that will come back around for theirs. So it's another one.
It has to be a safe space.
Right, safe physically, mentally.
Well, and for some of our children, unfortunately, the school building is their safe space because of the traumas they're going through at home with food insecurity and, and all of these community issues that we can't fix. But if they feel as if they have a safe space at school, I think the pandemic brought this forward with kids just didn't get fed. And what they liked about going back to school was the fact that they got to eat every day. And that's really sad, but it's, it's a fact that we have to, we have to be concerned with.
Absolutely. Any other top priorities?
Just to kind of piggyback on the parent involvement, I really believe when I was the administrator at Maplewood and we struggled with parent involvement, the way we got parents in was if the kids enjoy and they want to be there, their parents will come. And so your sphere of influence is really those kids. And what can we do to make them want to be part of our family and our school? And the more you increase that, the more they'll drag their parents in. Whether they're kindergartners or they're middle schoolers or they're high schoolers. We have high schoolers come back all the time and want pictures and, and just wanted to check in on how we're doing. So if you can increase that, I mean, it's a small number, but if you can increase that by 10 each year, you're going to increase the amount of parent involvement they get.
So positive involvement of the stu.
Positive, I mean, just kids, you have to engage kids, you have to have authentic relationships with kids so that they want to be there.
Well, to piggyback on what Kim said, during the pandemic, we didn't have cheer blocks, we didn't have anybody at, at ballgames. And I remember the first game, home game we could have with people in the bowl watching, the kids were just ecstatic that they, they actually got to go to this. And I think the more student involvement we can get, you know, we're, we're Spartans, we're proud to be Spartans. What, what does this look like? If you say you were a Connersville Spartan, it could be academics, our academic teams do well. Our athletic teams, obviously, in this community are huge. So, you know, what does that, what does that look like from a community perspective? You know, this is, this is who we are and what does this involve? And, and what are the responsibilities? If you say, I'm a Spartan, what does that mean? What kind of person are you? Where, where do you want to go? How do you comport yourself? And I think we've done a really good job when we have taken groups of kids to other places. And people have commented on how well behaved our, our students are and how they just don't have the issues with them that we've encountered when we've gone to other, other facilities.
So maybe transparency, but not just with the staff, but students and parent involvement.
Across the board.
Across the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know how you do that.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we can fully accomplish that, but it's really clear that we need to do, we need to do a better job of that if we're, if we're going to survive.
Yeah, and if we go, that's another one of, I believe that's on our, you know, where we're at right now. That was a positive, it's something we knew very well, it's something that we had as a pain point and it's now bubbled up and it looks like that's something that's a top priority. So that's it.
Can you add, next to successful students, can you add, can you, to make sure that.
Jeremy, do you need the portrait of a graduate?
I was wondering.
I'm sorry.
Or is that, is that too?
That's hard because.
That's pretty certain, that's pretty deep.
Well, the portrait really is, is so wide, right? And so, I mean, yeah, that is the picture of what we believe to be successful students. Isn't that with us, right?
That is how we classify success, right?
But with this, that portrait of a graduate, like you were saying earlier, you know, it's, it's what our kids need to learn in kindergarten, the skills, what we're even, you know, I can't, it's like soft skills as well as hard skills that are going to move them along so that they continue to grow.
And I think our little Spartan center is a top priority because it starts from the youngest.
All right.
Getting, I mean, I really think that's a.
And they're, they do it, they do it fantastic. And, and I think recognizing developmental differences of the book that Brian is having the middle school teachers read, I, I read at the beginning of the summer. It's a Bible as far as what, what that age group of kid looks like, where their brain development is, the expectations, both reasonable and unreasonable. And, and I think that that education piece is going to help a lot to meet the needs of those kids because it, it gives you an insight into where they are as opposed to where they look like they should be.
Sure, sure.
How about accountability of our parents and ourselves when it comes to discipline? You know, it's not just the school's responsibility for that, so there's an accountability.
I love that idea. And in a, in a perfect world, that is like to be a team. It's so great. I don't know how we get over the parents who can't see their child's faults.
Right.
Or, or, or had a, a bad experience themselves.
They have a bad experience and so they're just projecting that too, yeah.
Sure. We've got a couple more minutes on this and then we're going to highlight some of these reoccurring. So any of them, what's some other top priorities? And see if maybe we can get two or three more that would be our top priorities. Ready for Sean? Stop. That was a quick little page.
Well, I don't know how to word this and it's not tangible, but how do we continue to grow while our funding reduces? Like, I mean, I, I know we can't, you know, we're, we're trying not to hire too many. You know, we're doing it all for tradition, we're trying to not have to have.
But that, that has a domino effect too. As you reduce those types of things that impacts other places in terms of student achievement and the opportunities that you can provide for kids and the social, emotional support. You have to cut something at some point.
Well, and also too, it's, it's like, as our funding is, we want experienced teachers, but the fact is that if we have a lot of hires and they're of the, the higher end of the salary, do we hire one or do we hire two? And then, and unfortunately, those kinds of questions have to be answered. And how do we, how do we balance that so we do not have a staff situation where we have an inordinate amount of people without, because the average teacher burnout now is five years. That you go into it and five years later, you're out. And, and if we don't provide the support for these younger teachers, that you go in and you're wide-eyed and then the reality of it all hits you. And I think that's why we get the burnout after about five years. But that's not good for our kids to have this constant, because a new person is going to be just that. And some of them work out really well, but without the support. And then you have all of these peripheral issues that come with not having someone that's as good as they're going to be, dealing with all these other issues that we have to deal with.
And what we're going to find by a lot of these, and we're not meant to have the answers now, we don't know how you're going to be able to do that, continued growth with funding cuts. And, and really, no, if we all had the answers, we have it figured out. But that's not to negate it from always being your top priority, right? That can always be something to focus. We'll put a plan and figure out a way. But if that is what's, is something that matters, it should not be dictated, well, it used to matter to us when we had the funding, now we don't have the funding, it doesn't matter. How can we figure out a way? So don't let that stop you from putting up something as a top priority, even though there are those huge constraints.
So alternative funding streams. Jeremy was just mentioning maybe EDG might have some grants they can apply for that help us. And we've talked about like working communally with the other taxing units, the councils and such. What are our resources? What are we doing? So, I mean, I know we can't start a business and raise money to just fund the schools, but. But then there is all, there is also, you know, looking at project-based learning, looking at kids making something. And that's not on the corporation level.
Right.
But, you know, I don't know with funding streams, if we can get more teachers, these donors choose and advertise that. I know some do already and within their buildings, you know, so they can get materials paid for, but I don't know what is going to be.
And staff culture.
Yeah.
That's a.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Big investment that we, I, I thought I probably invest a lot of time in that. I hope I'm not going to say investments, I guess, on the front row. So, but I think that's important. I would say, I never want influence to be here because of culture. They might be for geography, they might be for pay, like those kind of things we can't control. We can completely control the pay, but not a lot, but culture is important.
Absolutely. So you have to.
Well, and financial weight, like, this is a place for people. Sometimes factors outside of our control warrant that, right? It can get inside of his heart, so we can, we can do our part. Financial weight will work.
Do we have, and this is one of those, as I'm stepping in a little bit, games of content, do, does the corporation send out any type of like culture survey? Do we have a?
I've not done one either that I've been.
We used to have them and frankly, nobody really paid a whole lot of attention to them because this was another one of those things. If you said something negative, you were going to get a note and said, why did you say this? And it's, it didn't remain anonymous. And then it became a, it became a real issue. And I was going to say something to money. Erica is the grant queen. She, when we had an issue, when we had a water issue, she dug into it like crazy and found some alternate sources that, that schools may, may have available to them, but it wouldn't be in, in their usual melting pot of things. And if we're going to try to find other funding for things, maybe we need to have a priority to look outside those boxes that we usually look to. Because you found, you found a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that was, you could get all kinds of stuff, like.
Would that fall under that alternate funding streams where we have to?
Yeah, but just in the, in the one issue, I mean, you found all kinds of monies that were available to schools and to communities to help fund these kinds of projects. And I think that schools have not been accustomed to having to go to those alternate, alternate sources.
Sure. Any other top priorities before we go on to the next phase of this? Anything else we're letting it on here? Okay, as always, if something comes up, by all means, put it on. Okay, this is the fun, you've got to get up a little bit. We're going to get you up and moving. Will you take a pack of stickers, just one sheet, and pass them down if you wouldn't mind? Everybody grab some stickers. And what we're going to do with this, and this is a very loose rule, this is whatever your personal opinion is, based on about as many as we have and how many people. You would normally be about three to five dots each. And so what we would do is we would take our three to five, how many you feel compelled, and you're going to dot an item, you're going to physically put your sticker next to, doesn't matter where, the things that are the standouts for you. What are the ones that are bubbling up for me? Does it need to be bubbling up for you next? You know, Jeremy, for example, staff culture was a big, so he'd throw a dot next to it. You can dot the same thing because that's how we're going to see those top priorities bubbling up. So you can use, and only two things are your top priority, put two. It's whatever you feel, if you want 12, put 12. I won't, I, I'm not judging you.
What do you want us to do?
You're going to dot your top priorities.
How many do tomorrow?
Three to five. But if you feel compelled for 12, you put 12 on there. I, I see Chris counting how many stickers he has. He's in the whole.
Re-brain yourself.
Okay. Yeah, but you go, and just as long as you will put them, so we're not covering up the word. So you've got to get a little creative on here. Go for it, you can dot them. And if you can't, you can get rid of writing, come down.
She's almost.
You need to get up at this point. I did it.
You're not allowed to.
Your sheet. What's it supposed to be? Huh? You need to cut it, you're, you're, you're great, please. Get above me.
Can't wait to see you. Three to five, no, fine, three to five dots or as many as you feel compelled of the items that are standouts for you for top priority. And you're going to put a sticker on it.
It doesn't matter what you build.
No, not at all. I have one person just said, I don't think I do any, I don't think. No, I think it's easier.
There's so many.
I know.
Hey, have you seen Marcy?
Staff culture goes with salary and getting the best because people are happy with their.
They're taking a dot there.
It's kind of a lot of teaching planning part that I can tell you.
It's like, is this getting me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. If you feel compelled more than five, go for it, you can put as many on there. I, here we have 15 on the sheet, you can use.
My letter for me on one of them.
I mean, you use your dots, however you want to use your dots there. That may be something to get, we judge you on also.
Well, it was, it was a little bit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just do a couple more pages.
I'm wasting.
Oh, Steve should.
That's right, process line. Wait, find it.
Yes, they leave it at all.
If you see and feel that there is something that kind of is combined, we absolutely can cluster them together. And you can save your dots and put them collectively.
Did you cheat? How many did you use?
Did you cheat? There's no right around here.
Don't they call me an answer?
Just going to count how many dots are left on the sheet.
Don't look at my sheet, I'm not using my sheet.
No, but a lot of them are so, a lot of them are so...
Yeah, we're getting there.
That makes... Because if you have a teacher in a classroom that doesn't want to be there and they don't like what they're doing, it rubs off on the kids. And when the kid comes home and says, "Well, how was school today?" Well, my teacher hates me. How do you deal with that?
Okay, if anybody wants to, we do have a break, an actual break coming up, but while I get this situated for the next phase, if you want to grab a drink, use the restroom, or I'll meet right ahead.
Yeah, but SOS.
There's more dots if you feel compelled. Put up some more. Do all of these go together? Those are together. Okay, so what we're going to do is we'll cluster those together. I like it.
Yeah.
So these two relationships here, okay. That would be a small. I'm going to jot down these and then we will dive in and talk through these. Give me just a second. And as I'm numbering these, these are not any type of breaking. These are just telling me we're moving down. Okay, so what you see me doing here, and this does not negate the value of anything that may have been one dot. That is not to negate, but how we kind of find these themes are, is that we are going to see the things that we have a lot of agreement in here. So talk, as I go through, I'm going to start listing these top priorities. But what I'll offer to any of these as I write these down, if you by chance used one of your dots, because you saw this is valuable, if you want to share it, you're welcome to. Does anybody want to talk on enrollment of why that bubbled up for you as a top priority?
I think it's obvious.
So that's one of those, we'd be in a detriment if we did not have that. Okay, great. I'm going to abbreviate some of these, successful students, and not add all of the context, but we'll make sure we have it captured. Let's see, anybody else on enrollment of why that was a standard? That's like solidly, right? We have to do something. Another one of ours is the successful students. That's their academic achievements. That's, I don't know if you have it on here. Does that also fold in, you know, the graduates, that mean a successful graduate hitting those marks?
I don't know. Does it also go with continued growth while funding cuts? Is that considered growth? I can't see everything.
We have academic achievements, successful students.
Underneath that is continuous growth, that might...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, those kind of go together.
Yep, absolutely. So we will, those will be hand in hand, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So another one, the continued growth. Anybody want to talk on that? Why that was valuable?
What, I think we need, what, how do we define a successful student? And I think that that's something that we can need to get into a little bit, because for some kids, seeing them go through graduation is huge, because it's been such a struggle for them to get that far. And for others that are more academically oriented and are going on, but for some kids, just getting that diploma, particularly when in their families, they have not had that, had that happen, that is such a... It may be just the lowest quantity of diploma, but it's that diploma. They have made it when others have not.
And you're exactly right. We will want to define what a successful graduate means. That is what we will get to. But no matter what, we want them to be successful, and then it needs to be defined, what is success?
Yeah, and it kind of might depend upon the kid. But I think that we need to be... I need... My problem is when we talk about academics, 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 academics. There are some kids that are just not there. And we need to celebrate those kids that graduated by the skin of their teeth as much as we need the ones that walk out with 60 college credits. And I think that that's a real difficult, real difficult thing to do, because in the real world, the diploma is the diploma. And, you know, what your GPA was getting it, unless you're going on to college or something, it's the fact that you did it. And I think that's one of the things that Wesley and I have learned from adult ed. It's not where, it's not where it came from, but it's that you accomplished it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Another one of the big hitters was transparency. And we've seen this theme throughout the day. No matter what that transfers, between the board, between our educators and our parents, transparency across the board. Even transparency in the sense it seemed like that even landed on our positive. That may be in the lane of communication. We just want to be transparent about what's happening in our spaces. So that looked like that was a big draw. Moving on over here to this list, communication seems to be one of those top things. Anybody want to talk on? I know we brought that up many times. That seems like communication across the board, right?
I just don't think you could ever over-communicate.
No. Because if you don't communicate, then the rumor mill gets going and the miscommunication. Somebody hears something and if you're not, I think Sasha's thing about bringing up a board page, that this is what we do, I think would go a long way to improve that. Just letting people know what we're doing in a forum that's easily accessible to everybody instead of individuals posting stuff on Speak Out Connersville or Facebook that may have a bit of truth to it, but certainly is not the whole story.
Another big one, and this has also been a theme, and drawing people into the community. Community in general seems to have been a theme for today.
But I think that one was referring to bringing people, enrollment.
Enrollment into the community? Okay, so do we want to add that context?
I think the other one that's more important is the one down towards the bottom we combined two, where there's four dots.
This right here, the relationships and the involvement for the community?
Those two together, that should be one, in my opinion. And I like that one, not just for parents, but that could involve community. I mean, our patrons, you know, obviously, I have plenty of people who have kids in the school that contact me, but I get a lot of people, like Anne's referring to, older teachers or people who are older who said, "Well, this isn't how we used to do things," or whatever, and they feel very much out of the loop. They don't know what's going on in schools, because they don't have kids in the schools. And they hear something and maybe, I mean, I haven't had anybody lately like attendance or whatever, and I'm like, "What's going on?" So I feel like we need to draw in our patrons who are besides our parents, parents and then others.
Is this relationships and involvement not only for our parents, but the community, right? Is that kind of working in reality? Okay, this is for parenting?
But I think they meant, I think whoever was tagging that one when I was watching people go up, it might have been the parent component. Because we have a lot of parents that either aren't involved or want to be more involved or don't know what's going on and confused. So I don't want to...
Yeah, no, but still, we can combine that. If the theme is the relationships and the involvement, that can look different in whatever that facet is. Parents, community, external, everybody wants to be involved. How do we involve that type of individual?
Well, I was the president of the Retired Teachers Association for a number of years, and we stopped it at COVID. And the fact was, we could not get retired teachers to even want to participate for a lot of reasons. And some of them just did not have... I said, "Well, why don't you go sub? Because we need substitute teachers so badly." And for a retired teacher to go in and sub is a pretty easy deer, because you know, you know the bones. You know what to do. And it's like, too many of them said, "I would never walk back in that building again." And that's something we can't afford to do with our staffing. Some of us hung in there and delight, but there were more, I would say, "Go sub for a day, you'll like it." "I don't want to be there." You know, "I'm just glad I'm out." And some of that's burnout, but some of that is culture that we can do, I think we can do more to help engender a better sense as far as that's concerned.
And that, speaking of staff culture, that is another one that seemed to be a top priority. So I added that on the list, but that is a top priority. If I, if you all would, take a scan of these, make sure that I have captured these and we pull them out. Safety, yes, thank you. That is why I have your eyes on here. And as you can see, we are clustering these, and that's great. That's what we want to do, because we can hit the mark on more things of that. Is there anyone who feels strongly about any of these ones that didn't bubble up as a top priority? Just because they did not have multiple doesn't mean they can't be added. Is there anything else, or we could cluster if there's something we want to pull and vote into these? Do you think anybody else wants staff?
I think we can cluster probably staff, faculty, culture with, I think that has a lot to do with salary, which wasn't done, but I think those things are all part of that, all part of that particular...
It makes an impact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like, okay, because salary, we all have bills to pay.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that does hold, that makes an impact on that. We are in progress with about 15 more minutes of work, and then we owe you a break. I promise you all a break. I see those sleepy eyes after lunch coming. We'll get you up and moving and move around. But what I would look, my watch says it doesn't understand, sorry. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to move these, and we're going to just focus on this sheet right here. And we have to remember, we're not putting anything in stone right here, right? This is the foundational work. So we may have something that comes up at another time. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask, what do we have? Okay, we're going to get up and move around a little bit as much as we can, or we can stay at this table. I'm going to ask you, Anne, would you count off one, two, three, and go around in the table? We start...
One.
Two.
Three. Oh!
I think we start over. We start...
One, yes. Thank you! Two, okay. So I'm going to ask my ones to go together, twos to go together, three, and I think what we have, we'll have a few odd numbers on there. So partner up with your same number. If we need to stay at this table...
Dustin, are you a one there? Can we move around?
Okay. You can move around. So get with your number, and I will give you the next set of directions. And you can spread out a little bit if you like.
Kim, are you a one?
No, I'm a three.
I'm a two.
I'm a two, so...
I was three with Kim.
Who is the other one?
Chris, you're a two.
Oh, Wesley's the other one.
Just don't look too far, you can't see this. Please.
Okay, Dustin, you can stay. I'll move down here, it's just you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, yo! Okay, I was going to say, we really kind of have. Okay, you can each have one of these. You can take one for a partnership. Would you mind to just make sure, if you want?
Oh, sure.
Okay, okay, got it? Doing that on purpose here. Okay. So take a look, we're going to shift into core values. And remember that when we started talking about this period, when we were talking top priorities, that was our what, right? These are what we want to focus on. Now we're shifting into the how. These are those values. How do we accomplish these things by leading with our top values, right? These are our most pivotal, I'm sorry, take as many as you like. These are our top values, our core values, that we have to lean into to make these happen. So what I would like you to do, I'm going to pass out, however you would like to do it. If you want to jot it on a piece of paper, post-it notes, and we're going to stick them up here. Pick... There you go. I have pens also if you need it. What we want you to do, you can pick all of these if you can get them off, or you can pick your top three to five. And we want you to align a couple of core values to that. So for example, if enrollment is one of your top priorities, we want to select the top core values that are going to make that happen. How are we going to make that happen? By choosing those core values. So you can put them on a sticky note, and then I'm going to ask you to kind of align them here. So pick three to five of your top priorities and align them with some core values.
So basically, like if we thought enrollment filled, I'm just throwing one out here, trust.
Absolutely.
We would put trust on a sticky note instead of...
Yeah, we'll do one at a time, but if you want to just put enrollment equals trust.
Okay, got it.
And so I'm going to give out some post-it notes, align some of your top priorities with core values that are enrollment.
I think it's either student-centered or high-stakes.
I think it has to go to student-centered. Because if we're not student-centered, if we don't put it out there that we are student-centered, we're not going to be able to... So we're going to be there.
Also, inclusion, maybe? Everyone, everyone feels well supported, because I think we have had people leave behind as they don't feel...
Successful students.
Yeah.
That is student.
Are we just writing one value on a...
Is many, one to two, or if you feel like there's more that, you know, obviously there's going to be more. Yeah, one to two, core priority, yeah, absolutely.
And then, so for number one, we have student-centered. Do we want another one for that one?
Successful students academic achievements.
Inclusion.
Okay, and the next one?
Yeah. Okay, number two, successful students.
That's a separate sticky note.
Equity, I think.
Okay, number two. Successful students academic achievement. How about responsibility?
I was putting one...
You know, that...
You can put them on the same, you can put them on different, it doesn't matter.
But how about responsibility for that? Because if we're going to have successful students...
We only have certain amounts.
Teachers have to be responsible. We're stuck with the kids, we also have to be responsible for doing the work.
Continued growth is going to be...
No, that's adulting 101. It's not going to be handed to you. You've got, you've got to work.
I also think equity, collaboration, because we're saying not all students achieve the same way. So successful students... That's our way, these are the way they are, so we can target kids who...
Yeah, and I think...
I do, too. So how about we...
Responsibility and equity for that one.
Okay, three is...
If you get through all of them, have added, you can put a five.
Oh, okay.
Okay, next.
Communications.
Do we want to do continued growth with funding cuts? Do we want to do that?
I mean, I think strength, communication are super supportive.
I can, that's everybody's... And transparency. And we're not going to, if we're all going to, we're going to get through, next one just...
Relationships, involvement for parents and community.
Transparency, I think, I think that's... Well, and also I think it comes with integrity.
Well, it's also trust.
Yeah, I mean, I think that transparency involves integrity. It involves transparency and trust.
Faculty culture.
So I think you could put, for transparency, I think you could do the integrity and the trust. It's already such transparency.
That's trust, empathy.
This is for number...
And accountability.
Yep. Yep.
I think for communication. And I see a lot of...
Safety.
Collaboration.
I'd say...
Empathy.
Collaboration.
Trust.
Trust.
Yeah.
Maybe collaboration.
Yeah. People.
So trust and then...
And definitely trust.
Communicate people. Five, how about collaboration?
Yeah.
We think there's innovation to look here with enrollment. The more innovative you are, the easier it feels. Okay. Number six, relationships, involvement for parents and community.
Trust.
Trust.
Yeah.
Inclusion.
We're done.
We're done. We did all of them.
Good job.
You're welcome. Did you put everyone on a different post-it?
No. Would you like me to do that?
We were concerned.
I was saving money. On number six, we have...
I said, "That's trust."
Inclusion.
Inclusion.
Okay.
At least with parents. Inclusion is everybody's... Trust is...
Okay. Staff, faculty, culture.
Respect.
Yeah. This is huge.
Trust.
I disagree.
You know, I like innovation for that one, only because I feel like that might embrace individuals within the corporation who have unique ideas and want to want to be...
Anytime we see... So I think that to have, but I think it really goes to respect. If you bring something new to the table that's innovative, that people would have the respect that it would be something to do.
Three, three, zero. You need to get up and take a shower.
Dylan, what's this issue?
I can relate.
You already know, right?
Yeah.
I want to...
That's best. That one's different. Which's best? Not the same ones you wore. Yeah.
And I think innovation, just to embrace individuals.
Want to try something different?
Yeah.
Okay. Safety.
Trust.
Also excellence. We want to get in your...
I agree.
If we're not rewriting that, sorry.
Well, I, no, I put them together. No, no, I put them together. No, 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 no. No, I put them together, and then I was like, oh, I think we're getting to say the same thing. No, we did. We did one, one, two, one, two, four, five, six, seven.
If you want to make your way back over here, would you break your sticky note with you?
Are we saying we work in our rooms anymore?
No.
He's on Sarah. We know how this works.
Wash every part.
Yes. And I said, "I can so relate."
I heard that. I'm like, okay. He doesn't know.
No.
Okay. As you're making your way back to your seats, we're going to have just a collective conversation. I am going to ask, please, don't, you know, wad up and toss your post-it notes. I am going to ask you to put them all up on here after we discuss, because this is another thing that I'm going to capture and catalog on here. But what I'm going to ask is, I know we have some people that did all of the top priorities. We picked some of the highlighted ones in other groups. But if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to ask an individual in one of the groups, any of the groups, if you picked enrollment as one of your top priorities, would you mind listing some of the top core values that you associated with?
We put innovation, excellence, and student-centered.
Awesome. Anybody else have similar?
We did student-centered and inclusion.
Absolutely. Great.
You don't have any of those?
It's because you didn't copy what you thought.
We had trust, inclusion, excellence, and responsibility.
Trust unless you do them here.
Well, they have to trust us.
Oh, sorry. I'm questioning Jeremy.
This is the no book.
We're back to the guidelines today.
It was just Jeremy.
That's okay. I didn't hear him. I didn't see him.
Trust.
No judgments?
No judgments.
Okay. Awesome. So what we're going to do is, as we can see, there are, I mean, we all have different values that align with that. But that is going to be centered. That's what we're going to want to stand on as we try to advance these top priorities. Successful students. What are some of them? And you can just shell them out. What are some of the ones, if you picked that, what align there in the core values?
Responsibility.
Yeah.
And equity.
Sure.
Responsibility on the part... A teacher can teach a really good lesson, but if the kid makes the decision not to do the work, then the ball's in their court. I mean, you can lead the horse to water, but you can't make him drink. So responsibility has to be for the teacher to do their job, but also for the student to do theirs.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And equity, to make sure that we're treating people in the way that they need to be treated.
Absolutely. What's a few other qualities?
Excellence, student-centered, innovation.
Fantastic. Continued growth, even with funding cuts that we're approaching. What are some of those core values that came out there? Did anybody have that selected?
We did.
We did them all.
I was going to say, Jeremy, you have them on there.
We did all but that one.
We had innovation being the most important. Student-centered, transparency.
That's big. Creativity, like you were talking about Erica with those grants and different types of funding. That's what we're going to have to do. And that's a great example. Thanks for queuing that up perfectly there. That's a great example that no matter what, if this is what we stand on as one of our top priorities, that doesn't waver. We get creative, like leaning into Erica and that skill set to come up with different funding streams or however we make. But that is, if that's a top priority, we don't waver from that, right? That's that northern star that we're going towards. So that's a great example. Transparency.
Trust.
Trust.
Intentionally. Integrity.
Right. Absolutely. Let's see. Communication.
Trust, collaboration, and also transparency.
Huge. Relationships. This is all type of relationships. Involvement for parents, community, internally, between the board and community, all type of relationships and involvement. What do we need to have as our core values if we're leaning into that?
Have you on four or five?
Which one? I'm sorry.
Oh, our relationship's six. Jeremy was shouting.
We had trust, inclusion, and empathy.
Yeah.
We had responsibility and respect.
Yeah.
And collaboration.
Dare I say, quite almost the whole list would need to be utilized for that, by all means, for that priority. Staff and faculty culture, that internal culture. What would be one of some of those core values we need to lean into there?
Trust.
Respect.
Respect. Huge, yeah.
Accountability.
Huge, yeah. Absolutely. And then, yeah, and then safety. This is safety across the board. What is, what are those core values we need to have at the forefront? Oh, yeah. That's another one. All of them. Yeah, absolutely. And so this exercise really one is something that we're going to have to lean into and keep in mind throughout the whole process, because as we set these top priorities and we eventually get these nailed down to what our top priorities are, we have to know that those core values have to be under the surface and leading with that the entire time, or we're going to lose sight of it, right? Just like for that example of the continued growth, if we're going to stand on this and say continued growth is our top priority, it's with no exception. It's leading with those values no matter what. We may have to get creative. We may have to do all those things, but we have to lean into those core values to make that happen. So what I'm going to ask for you, if you don't mind, and you can do it haphazardly, if you would all stick your post-it notes up here, just so that I can capture those and make sure that I catalog those with the alignment of these top priorities, that would be fantastic. And then, we are going to go on a break that I owe you, even if it's a few minutes late here. We will do a break until 1:40. How does that sound? So you get a little bit of break, stretch your legs, get a snack, and then we will dive into the last hour, little bit that we have. So the last few things that we're going to dive into, and I mentioned this at the very beginning, is, this is just the tip of the iceberg here, of talking about the current mission statement, right? And I know you all can rattle it off with your eyes closed and know it by heart, but in case you can't, I wrote it down for you. Hey, let's put Dustin to the test here and see if he can... Did you pick singing or dancing?
I picked dance.
Oh, well, then you need to dance. I was going to go through this. Okay. So if you can't rattle this off by heart, as a refresher, this is the mission. The mission of the Fayette County School Corporation is to provide quality educational programs in an environment which is safe, harmonious, and conducive to learning, enabling a diverse population of all ages to become independent, productive citizens, and lifelong learners.
That is so dirty.
Thank you. So like the big salad.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good, but...
It's good, but it's just, it's too much. I mean, and I've worked on mission statements a lot, and it's, it's in education speak, maybe, that there are certain things which other people are not necessarily going to understand. And our, but our verbs were in order because the state of Indiana one time told us in our mission statements that we were doing for schools, that our verbs, our verb tense was wrong, and we had to go back and fix everything. So that's, that's nice.
So what you're going to see me do on this, and while this is not a, you know, a mandatory decision, if you all say you love this, we continue on with this as a mission. This is, back to Jeremy's point, there's no right or wrong on this, but we just want to have this dialogue and this conversation. So what you're going to see me do, word salad. Someone said word salad. Leslie, was that right? We're capturing all of the things on here. We want to see where we land on if this meets all of our needs, or we like this theme of this, and we just want to make it an updated version to go with the strategic plan, but we want to have the dialogue around this. Does anybody think that it holds true? That it's, that it's fine, and there's no problem with it being fine, and we don't need to rework it? Judgment free zone. You can, and if anybody does, you're not going to judge on it.
I don't think it's accurate.
Okay.
I just don't like to serve for purpose.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So when you're trying to divide, define the so that, which is essentially what you're doing, right? Why do we do that? Why do we serve the board? What do we do? Why do we show up ready for education? Why does all that happen? That's the so that. That's really what we're trying to do, right? So does that do that well, in a way that communicates to people what that so that is? And my thought is, it does, and it's not what's required.
Right.
It, it's... It just doesn't, I agree with Jeremy. It just doesn't, what is the, what is the purpose of our mission statement? And this tells a lot, but I think it really, it's, it's too much information. It's stuff that, we have these other things and other things that we do, and if we're going to have people buy into our mission statement, they'll read the first line and then they'll stop, because it's just too, it's word salad.
Yep. What else comes to mind here?
Well, when you Google difference between a mission and a vision statement, you know, mission is what we do now and why we do it, and vision is what we hope for the future.
Right.
And I don't feel that we have a vision statement. I kind of like that, I think it would be nice if we could come up with a simple mission and vision, because I think your vision guides your mission. So if we know in the future that we want, you know, our student, this wouldn't be it necessarily, but a vision to have students come back to Fayette County and contribute to their community, then that's going to tell us that we want students to graduate with the skills to operate a business or to begin a plan for doing something in their community. I can see how they would dovetail.
Sure.
I kind of like, it's a lot of work, though, to do both, so that may be too much.
And it's not a one-size-fits-all. There's plenty of institutions and areas that have just the mission, and sometimes your strategic plan encapsulates your vision in there. Because when you keep those short-term, which has been kind of the discussion, that, you know, usually strategic plans are either one, three, or five. One usually doesn't give a lot of time to have action and put plans behind it. Five sometimes is too far down the road, where we don't have enough actionable things we can do, changing climates. Three sometimes is that sweet spot, so if we're kind of talking through a three-year plan, a vision statement could be wrapped up in your strategic plan, because that would be that vision that you see for the corporation, is that, is those items that come up, but there is no right or wrong on there. And the really great part about this is, this is not thinking of this as a standalone project or this is another. This is going to bubble up and come to the surface organically. And that's why I put this top priorities, if you can see this, is what I would ask you is, we already pulled out things that are meaningful to us that are our top priorities. What we would want to make that decision is, do these top priorities land in this mission statement to us right now? And if the answer is no, then that's kind of the answer of, we need to align those two. And if you would answer yeah, that hits all the marks, we would say, we're going to move on with this. So they're going to organically work together with the strategic plan, the mission statement's going to come to the surface of, do we need to craft a new? And what is those things, what are the, what do we stand for? Well, we stand for our top priorities, right? This is what our mission of the corporation is. But it could be just wordsmithing, right? Changing out that word salad and making sure it hits the mark. Five words sometimes can do the job. So we just want to kind of look at it through that lens of what we think, and if we all decide, this will be part of the strategic plan process of culminating that new mission statement that'll come, or mission ambition that'll come, that'll coincide with that strategic plan.
How long have we had this mission statement? Do you have any ideas?
The only place I've ever seen is the website, in the back of our, our...
I think I remember vaguely when we came up with this, and it was, I think it was kind of a cut and paste job.
So one thing about this statement, like after school corporation, it says is to provide, like if we're just looking at words, that's future focused. We are, it's for us to provide, like that's the future, instead of just using the word provides.
Right.
Mission of Fayette County School Corporation is providing or is...
Yeah.
I think that we can, like, you know, the word harmon, like we tried to hit every word, safe, harmonious, conducive to learning, diverse population, independent, productive, lifelong learner, it just feels like we're buzzwords.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Something that might help, but I don't know if that's something you want to do, is look at other missions. Have you got other mission statements that will help us?
Yeah, we can definitely lean into some.
I don't know what others want, but sometimes that's a good way.
Yeah, if you think that would be helpful, we can look at some others for some examples. So looking. And like I said, this is just the tip of the iceberg here that we are just kind of trying to assess where we want to go with this, so we can look into others when we get to, if we get to the point we want to reassess and redraft, we can look at others, absolutely.
Lauren, we found that, that mission, vision will probably come a lot easier as the process unfolds.
Absolutely.
And as we determine what's really, really important, and as we look at that day after graduation, and once we, that's defined.
Yep.
Then that kind of comes in handy. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So it's like, it's actually six words, sorry, and stop. We were just students on the path to purpose, right? As we want the kids to understood when they graduated, this is your path to purpose in life, right? You know who you are as an individual, your strengths and gifts, you know what brings you joy in your heart, what your passions are, you know what the opportunities that lie in the world today are, like what are the potential pathways in your lifetime, and what are the needs that we're meeting in beyond, so how do you serve, how do you fit in, that type of thing. And if our kids found that sweet spot, like we were happy, like that's, we did our job, right? And everything we did was supplemental to that, so academic preparedness and all the social emotional stuff, and all was part of that. That, that, that vision statement didn't come, so after all of the other work, we were like, yeah, that makes sense. So have you found that, of course, your time, like if that will come.
Absolutely.
As we boil it down, if you will, excuse me, sorry, as we boil that work down.
Absolutely. If I would say to you, okay, do you all want to keep this? And you tell me no, and I tell you, well, let's craft our new one right now, let's go. Do you know how many times we're going to change that throughout this process? We, I mean, we might as well just start crumbling up the paper now. But that's why, so now that we have this really great foundation, we can start analyzing this mission statement through these lenses that we've talked about. And when we get to the point where it is time to pen to paper on this, it's going to be a no-brainer. Well, we don't need to discuss what words should be in there because we already have our top priorities. So we're going to take those five top priorities and let's take out one word there. We're not going to have that same back and forth that we would have if we tried to do this at this point. And that may be, and I have no context, but that may be why we have a version of this at this point. You know, maybe it wasn't, you know it wasn't aligned with the strategic plan, so that may be why we're not feeling on board with that. But this is going to come at a later time. The only thing that, reason we wanted to get our eyes on this now is to see, if you said that we were keeping this, this would be something we just put in the back of the process and we want to really talk about it. But if this is something that we are not going to stand on right now, then this is going to be part of our strategic planning process. And this is something that will stay within mostly the constraints of the board and the directional team. This isn't really where we're going to ask this direct question, we're not going to ask down the community survey or in the listening sessions, we're not going to say, do you want us to do a new mission statement? We're absolutely not. What we are going to do is we're going to listen to the things that bubble up from those, and then we're going to pull those in and say, you know what? That is, what they're talking about, that means something to us too, that is part of our mission. So this is going to stay within the constraints. You all are the ones that will be the primary focus of crafting this mission statement. But we are going to listen to the other people on those things that come up. But this will bubble up, bubble up organically. If I asked you to do it now, it's going to feel really hard. When we do get to the point, it shouldn't feel hard.
This is, to me, the mission statement is pedagogy. And it's, all the stuff that we're supposed to be able to do, but again, I'm not sure that it's relevant to where we are or relevant to the, if somebody asks us, what is our mission statement? I'm not sure that that's going to, what we have there is going to fit.
If a student or a community member happened to read this on our website, do you think they see themselves in it?
No.
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 And like you said, I think the mission and any vision we have have to be part of our strategic plan. And then if, you know, right now, I think our mission statement is on the backside of our main plates. But we used to have a sign up in the boardroom with the mission statement, that got taken down. And I don't know if it's posted anywhere else in the district or on their website.
Well, we used to have a thing in the boardroom to say, it always endeavored to do what is in the best interest of the children. That was on the back wall for a really long time.
Well, actually, I think that was the very first mission statement.
But doesn't that really encompass it all?
Well, it does.
You know, it's, our vision is to provide an educational opportunity that is in the best interest of all of our kids.
Yeah. Lauren, too. I'm just curious, and this came of what Angela said, like, does it make sense for an organization that you guys have helped with too, for the board to have a separate yet parallel mission? To the, to the...
In that goes for goals too. Because in some of the sessions I've attended, there's a strategic plan for your district, there's a separate document that are board goals, and they usually, the workshops I've gone to, they say just two to three, nothing more than that because the board, you know, doesn't action.
Absolutely. To both of your points, yes, absolutely. But there is a clear difference in board goals and the strategic plan for the corporation. And so those are definitely things that should be in place, that goes back to some of those threads that we look on these. We see a lot of board cohesion, board transparency, trust within the board. Now, those things should be separate, but still a goal, but those are the board's goals. And additionally, a board mission statement is absolutely acceptable. That also is something that would go hand in hand, should you choose, we stand for this internally amongst ourselves, and we stand united to support the mission for the corporation. And how we do that is by fulfilling our mission as board members.
Sure. Not trying to complicate things at all, just thinking outside the box.
No, absolutely.
Because the board's, the board's role is obviously different, right?
Sure, absolutely.
And I say that as a superintendent too, you know, the hard work happens in the classroom, and everything I do is supplemental, it's the hard work that happens within our classroom walls. And so my goals are going to be different than teachers' goals, right? So I'm just thinking about, I'm sorry if I made the...
No, no, that's absolutely part. They are, they go together, but they are standalone different focuses, as they should be. Once you start muddying the waters of putting the board's mission and goals into a strategic plan, that is going to look different. But if you can separate those out and have those clear entities, it's absolutely a great direction. And we have seen some of that thread come throughout the day. You know, in a good way, we have talked about the things that we hope internally for the board. So that may be something we want to talk about, is maybe doing, you know, this, the mission statement for the corporation is going to be outward focused, the mission statement of the board is going to be internal focused for how you support. And those could be crafted hand in hand. We can talk about setting some board goals and setting a mission statement for the board. And that's also a great part of the communication plan, and we've talked about that. Those are the type of things we want to get out into the community. Not only are we asking you to stand on this mission statement we have for you, but we also have one for ourselves. We're holding ourselves accountable. This is what we stand for. We want you to know what we stand for and what our mission is, and that's part of the communication.
Well, because actually, we don't do this, but there are board self-evaluation ones, and we've not done those because, again, we don't have the data, we don't have the board goals.
Sure.
And goals to say, oh, are we achieving what we're supposed to be? But I think that...
Absolutely. Yes. So yes, clear two different things, but absolutely just as valid to have those. Yeah, absolutely. Great points. Any other things, you know, I think there's consensus, and I don't want to, I know voting comes into play, all those things, I don't know if we have to, but by a show of hands, does everyone feel strongly about have factoring in crafting a new mission statement throughout the process?
Absolutely.
Unofficial, I know, but there's no voting here, on here. So then what we will do, I have had all of this, and I will make sure that we have this in the recap, that as long as everyone is in agreement, this will be a facet of our strategic planning process. It will come alongside of, with it, but this will be something that we end with also as a new mission statement, possibly the board goals and a potential board mission statement, if that is something we see valued. Any other kind of notations anybody want to add on here? I really like the word salad, that's a, I like that one on there. Anything else? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm working on a statement, just right here. Okay. Okay, our very last, how are we on time? Okay, perfect. Perfect. The last thing, we're going to go kind of into a, anybody need a break here? Are we all good? Are we on the slide? I see a yawn there. Okay, one of our last and hardest exercises. I always like to end it on a positive here and stay in the lane to give us some hope going into the next. So I'm going to ask you all to envision that we selected a three-year plan, you know, we decided that that was the scope of the plan that we wanted to go with, and that if we are launching this, hopefully to have a plan in early 2026. I'm going to ask you to envision three years past that, 2029, okay? So we are going to envision that we are in 2029, we have a successful strategic plan that we have worked, we have cultivated, we've hit the marks across the board. If our plan has been successful, what's different? What does our school district look like? What's our community look like? What are we hearing when we're going to Walmart and we're standing on the sidelines? What does it look like for 2029 if we've hit the marks? For not only ourselves, our teachers, our staff, our students? What are we encountering?
We are using data and sharing data to, both to highlight our successes and justify our actions. So data drives a lot of our decisions. Student data, whatever other data, testing data, culture data, you know, whatever, I just think we need more data.
Got it. If we've done this right, what are we hearing? What are we seeing?
We have parents that want to send their kids to the Fayette County School Corporation as opposed to putting them on, online. We, we've shown that we've had issues in the past, and we have worked through those. And the Fayette County School Corporation is a user-friendly place for the community. It's, it's something to be proud of, and you know, you're kind of proud to be a Spartan in everything that that means, that we provide excellent education, and we want people to, we want people to come there and not seek out other, other avenues. And I think that's, I think that's huge.
Right.
Because this will, 2029 will be the year that the kids that are freshmen in high school graduate. So we've got that period of time.
Sure.
I think it's, yeah, I'm sorry. I think it's, I think it's to Leslie's point, using data as a term without leaving out the goals we've set that are on the list, right? So like enrollment, like have we stopped, are we having plateaued or grown? Are we achieving, are we growing kids, right? So continuing growth, funding kids, or have we, have we added programming? Have we remained the same? Or we lost programming because of funding cuts? Transparency is harder to quantify, right? I don't know how you, that's harder. Communication is a little bit harder to, culture, I mean, obviously staff retention, things like that, the value of culture surveys, things like that. But safety, obviously, is easy, because we have data for safety compared to, things that happen in school. So yeah, I just think it's using data to, whatever goals we set, relate it to those priorities, whether that be better.
So using that data to measure our goals, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
What are we seeing in our classrooms? What are our students encountering if we have done this the right way?
More positive educational experience across the board with all kinds of things. We have, we have so many needy kids that make it very difficult.
Consistency piece, consistent staff, consistent, I mean, we still have transient populations, I don't think this is only in the same school, but I don't know. Kim brought up the word consistency kind of across the board.
Well, we've tried to do that as far as curriculum was concerned, that for the kids particularly that move in the elementary schools. So they're within a few days of, if they're at Frazee or Fayette Central or wherever, so I think we've, we've had a striving for that. But the difficulty with that comes is every classroom situation is a little bit different in the dynamic, in grand view may be very different than the dynamic at Fayette Central. So there, we have to have that adaptability.
Sure.
And I have an issue with things being data-driven. I'm not a data person particularly. I recognize the need for it, but I think we have to look at it with a more, a more humanistic approach, that this is going to give us a lot of information, but that's not the sum total of who we are. You know, a kid's test score is not the sum total of who they are. The state of Indiana would tell you that, that we have fourth, third graders that were throwing up because they weren't going to pass I read. That's obscene, okay? So I think the data is important, and the summer school, people did a fantastic job with that. The bottom line is, we have some really needy kids, and we're trying to put square pegs in round holes as far as adapting to the needs of the state and where our kids really are, and the developmental appropriateness of some of the material that is being pushed on us. First graders can't do algebra.
Sure. Is that maybe looking at it with multiple factors, like a multi-factor approach? You know, we're looking at data, we're looking at the human side, we know we have to utilize those test scores in certain areas, but a multi kind of factor?
Yeah, and not have it be the be-all, the be-all, end-all.
Let's put, let's put on our, you know, maybe we're teachers in the classroom, maybe we are a parent, seeing it through our children's eyes. What is happening in those classroom spaces?
Maybe we have more parent involvement.
That would be great.
And think, this is where we are after a successful plan, so let's think, that would be an ideal.
No negative actions, speak out counters, no comments. Wouldn't that be, we would know we were, we were golden if nobody said anything negative.
Well, and I think, I think the whole communication piece, if parents, particularly with discipline issues and the like, if they know, and again, to Sasha's point about putting it all out there in a place where everybody can find it, so it doesn't come in from multiple entities that don't, that have only bits and pieces of the information. You know, this is why we do, we just had a new handbook that came out, and frankly, we'll send it home with people, and the parents are supposed to sign up on it, and 90% of them will go, okay, I need your signature on this, mom, sign it. They won't read it, the kids won't read it. And although by law, we have to put it out there, it's, it's not something that people are really going to pay a whole, whole lot of...
I think you would see a lot more trust. Have you measured that though?
Yeah.
So that's a great point, where I was going to ask, and I don't know if I have enough wall space, if you all can see, lean into some of these pain points, because ideally, if we've done this right, these pain points become our successes. They are the things that we are considering a success here if we've done this plan right. So you know, I know communication was a big thread, distrust was a big thread. So if we've done it right, we have trust back in our corporation, right? Amongst our board, our staff, our parents, we've done it right. So look at, pull up some of these pain points, if you can see any. Does any of these pain points stand out? You had community image was a big one on there. Lean in, is that, what would that look like if we, if that's a pain point now, if we've landed right with our plan, what does our community image look like?
Everybody's proud to be a Spartan.
There you go. Okay, so community pride, right?
Yeah, community, and this community, when I moved here 40 years ago, had a lot of pride in the community, but it was a very different community back then. It was, it was a lot wealthier, we had a lot of, we had the factories, they were going well, we had, we didn't have the diversity that we had.
Sorry, I know.
And it is just, so it's difficult, those adaptations have been very difficult for the school corporation to deal with.
Sure, sure.
You know, something I don't see that, I don't know that we put anywhere is the word expectation.
So where does that land?
Well, I was just thinking, my Google helped me a little bit, because I just Googled, how do you recognize transparency? And the first thing that came up and said, when expectations are met, when people know that what the expectations are, and the expectations are met. So I'm just thinking in terms of how we will know we were successful is because we earmarked the expectations that were throughout the corporation and we met those. So people can say, I don't, I don't know how to word that.
You've set expectations and we met them.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, absolutely.
Love that. It's so true that like, discipline becomes one expectation, doesn't matter reality, right? So when here's what I expected to happen, you didn't follow through, therefore, I'm disappointed in that.
And it's all at levels, because parents have expectations of what's going to happen in the classroom.
Absolutely.
And they have an expectation of what the teacher should do and what the principal, now they may, that their expectation may need correcting, like somebody can say, well, that wasn't really what the expectation was. It wasn't for your child.
Absolutely.
To get an A plus just to learn this. So yes, your child doesn't see right now, but that's great because they learned. So I just, I don't know where that comes in, don't actually write in the document.
Yeah, yeah. Because if kids come, if parents have sometimes very unrealistic expect, and as a classroom teacher, you have kids, parents will come in, well, why did this kid get this grade in my class? And, and to me, if they were passing, that was, that was satisfying. If they needed a little pushing, I'm going to push them. But the expectation of them having, and it's going to change as they evolve, because elementary school is very different than middle school, and very different than high school. So the expectations, and then the, or lack of expectation. Like, I didn't like school, so if you don't like school, that's fine. So I think that, but if we set these things out, set out responsibilities for parents, for, if we make it clear what our responsibility for parents and for, for the classroom teachers are, and... Not that everybody's going to, going to buy into them or do them, but we'll have it out.
Sure. What does diversity look like for us if we have hit the nail on the head with this plan?
I was just looking at that. And the relevancy, relevant stakeholders in the decision-making process have been identified. So you would either see more diversity, or individuals will feel like they have a role because maybe, I don't know, maybe the principal in their building reached out to tell them something. I used to tell the story about there was a math teacher at the high school, he's no longer there, but I got a call one day, I called this person back, and I thought, goodness, what's going on? They were just calling me to tell me my daughter did well on the test.
Yeah.
That does not happen very often. So like, I felt included, I felt that, I mean, my daughter was important, but I was important enough that they wanted to share that. So just thinking about parents who feel like they're not involved, or that they're not relevant to their building, somehow they would have a role. Why do I don't? Why did I don't?
Well, we, we used to try to do student-led conferences in order to get parents there and given the kids more responsibility. And by and large, the parents did not like them at all, and the kids hated them. I think it was an accountability thing as far as they were concerned, because they had to go through their work and account. It's, it's like, that's not our, the idea that education to a lot of parents, it's not their job. You know, the job of education is when you go in that classroom, the classroom teacher is mostly responsible for the education of that child. I think that attitude is getting better, but when you have curricula that the parents do not understand at all, helping a second grader with their math can be very taxing at this point in time. So I think we need to do a better job as far as educating parents, like, I can help you with this, I could show you how to do it, but not the way you're supposed, not the way you're supposed to do it. And I think that's very frustrating.
I think if you would get all of those together, I think you would have that picture of a graduate that's accessible.
And support.
You would know in 2029 that we did it.
Yeah, and the, and the kids have been supportive, we've not had kids drop out. We've, we've maintained, at least maintained where we are enrollment-wise. We're not, we're not leading people to brick and mortar, or more importantly, to online, online type situations.
Would that be, would that be increased enrollment if we are, is that successful?
Increased enrollment, yes, or, or at, at best not decline. You know, I'm not, I don't know how many people there are out there, but if we got, I think the numbers that Jeremy sent out, how many kids in the Fayette County School Corporation we lost to online and brick and mortar? That's, I can't remember the exact numbers.
I'd have to look at that, maybe it was 125 kids virtual, I think it's 307, but I don't know.
Well, I know there was.
And just our general brick and mortar attendance, it was 50 students.
Yeah, we've lost 57 kids.
Yeah, yeah, if we can, if we can stop that, because I was going to think that the numbers were, particularly for the online, were just.
Here, Chris, what's your?
We were just shooting off the idea of like, you know, if we're very successful in 2029, you would tend to see, you know, we're looking for data. You would see a decrease in summer school enrollment, because you would feel like you, you're getting it right. For the student.
Yeah. Decrease in credit recovery.
A couple of our big themes that have been throughout the whole day have been transparency and communication. What does that look like for us then?
Maybe we've got more evidence of communication, like a board, social media page, a website theme, user-friendly.
You would have parents, you know, maybe, you know, instead of them calling and asking, when is this basketball game? Or when are, if, that would all be decreased, because it's all the way out there.
And Mike, Jeremy, this comes to you, when the Connersville High School website no longer has, it has the, no longer has the teachers' email addresses, and I, and I understand from Teri's perspective, but if I were a parent, if a Connersville High School person, and I'm not, and I want to get ahold of a teacher, and I call 825-1151, I do not know their extension number, so we have to go that. You get a, you get a voicemail, you play, that was how we used to have to do things, with phone tag. And I, and I just don't think, a lot of the classroom teachers actually give out their personal text messages. They, they do that, and I think that the way we communicate now, I understand the difficulties with that, but, but somebody that's not, we have a lot of grandparents and we have a lot of other people that are not terrifically tech savvy, and they, they use the email. That's, or they use the text message. And if you can't get ahold of the email address, then it just frustrates the whole.
Some different avenues of communication there. What does the transparency look like? What's transparency look like? For all parties, you know, what if I'm a parent, if I'm a community member, a workforce partner, what does that transparency look like?
We know where each other is going and why, you know, we have, we have a clear purpose in what we're doing. And so if we're asking a community partner to do something, and they say, well, what's this all about? We have, we have an answer for them, that, you know, we want you to do this, and we think it will be good for the kids. And, and most of them will, will buy it. And the example is to be the change that Reed has done. The guidance department at the middle school went to them, saw this program, went to them, and convinced them that it was a very important program, and now we're in our sixth year of it. And it obviously is a great program. So if, if the community understands, particularly for asking them for any kind of resources, why this is so important, that we're not just spending money to spend money, this is something that's going to have a significant impact on our kids.
So everybody knows the value, right?
Yeah, value. We're not just doing something to say we're doing something, we're doing something with purpose and that has a value to, in, to help our kids.
What else? Look at some of these top priorities, what does maybe culture look like? What is the culture?
You know, with that, maybe if you know that we're on the right page, those surveys go back. They're, they're filled with more positivity, and like, this is what you did great, more of the data.
Positive feedback coming in?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Staff retention.
I'm sorry. Retention, yeah, absolutely.
With that, how about, not just student retention, but after they graduate, they stay in the community.
I'm sorry, did you say staff, you're saying student retention?
He said staff.
Okay.
Yeah, but like student retention, it's like they stay in the community, they get back involved with the jobs here, the programs we have.
And I think we're seeing, we're seeing more of that than we have in the past. We have students that are coming back and being involved in the, in the school situations where they're volunteering, they're coaching, they're doing those kinds of things, that they are living in the community and they understand the value of that, because they experienced it themselves. So they're willing to, to put themselves out and help other members. And I think we ought to really appreciate those people that have stayed, because.
Safety, that one's a hard, I mean, safety, I think it's a hard one, that's what Chris and I were talking about.
Because that's ever-changing, right? The needs.
Well, like, thanks when we have all of our upgrades, every door, every window, safety, is that, I mean, we're not through all that, right?
You mean it towards, sorry.
Door, all doors, all windows, everything, full, are we there yet?
I don't, I mean, windows can be shut, not locked, but all doors certainly should be, the children are behind them. I'm not aware of doors in our corporation that are unlockable, but children are behind them.
Right, but we, do we still have things on our safety agenda that we need to do to upgrade our safety personnel? That's what I'm talking about.
Part of that has to do with cameras and those kinds of things.
But just whenever we can turn around and say, all these things are accomplished, so our buildings are safe today.
As possible.
Right, as the technology.
As safe as they can be, I mean, we can't.
And I think we're starting off at a good spot with the transportation and being able to use that technology of like, your student might be five minutes late because of this bus.
That was really good.
So I think that is a great data.
Yeah, that is, right, exactly.
Utilizing the technology to get us the data that.
That then tells us we've accomplished that goal.
How do we, we talked a lot about kind of the different type of relationships, but how does our staff and faculty feel inside of our school?
Are you saying now, or are you saying in 2029?
How do they feel if we've done this correctly?
Their friends to come work with us.
They're not, they are not, they are not dreading coming to school and coming to work. One of the challenges that a previous administrator had, that, that they related to me was, says, what's the hardest thing about your new position as an administrator in a building? And he says, quite frankly, Ann, it's getting people to want to come to work. And for whatever reason that went on, and I think that that's improved, but if you don't have, have a, you have teachers that are frustrated with administration or with anything like that, if they feel impotent, if they're not being valued, that's going to come across to the kids. Because when you have a kid come in and say, this new teacher, they don't like me, they don't like the kids. And, and that may be, not be true, or not be the impression they're trying to make. But if you have kids that feel that, that they don't like them, or are not involved with them, or don't care about them, then every, all are punished, everybody loses.
Right?
Yeah, everybody loses.
What else? If I am a teacher in a classroom, what would be something, now, think in the mind, we're wanting to make sure this is a living document. It's not something that you only know about, it's not something that our administrators only know about. We want all the way down to our front level, our teachers, our aides in our classrooms. For me to feel connected to this strategic plan, what should be, how should I feel when I'm in those classrooms?
Value.
Value?
Feel that you're important, feel that, that you are doing the best that you can do with the information and with the tools that you're given, and somebody isn't going to look at you and nitpick you to death, why don't you do this, why don't you do this, why don't you do this, why don't you do this? And, and trust in the, in the classroom teacher to do the job for which they were, they have the education, but also provide, particularly for those new people, some mentorships to help them get where they, you know, we have a mentorship program, so if we have a first-year or a second-year teacher that's really struggled, what you're going to do in your first or second year, that's just part of it. That, that they feel as if, I'm not going to give up on Fayette County, I'm going to stay here because I'm given, being given more and more tools that I need to be more successful in what I want to do.
Sure, and that support, that's a thread that we have seen throughout the day. I think we had professional development, it came up in the lens of special education, you know, we wanted to have that ongoing training. So feeling supported, those, those teachers would feel supported.
I think teachers would feel empowered.
Empowered, that's great.
To come up with innovations and creative approaches, be supported by an admin. I know last year, Kim turned over the new teacher academy to the, to a couple of principals to run, and that's happening in this year. So again, that's empowering their leaders in their building to take charge of something for new teachers, rather than somebody that's on cabinet in an office.
And then if they feel supported, hopefully we will have more volunteers to do things like intermural.
So that's involvement, right?
Gyms open to supervise.
I feel like you would see your students, not that we base everything on their grades, but I, they would meet their own personal goals.
Yeah.
Research supports that, I think, when employees feel like they're challenged, I think that, that's an important piece. Not to fall into a pattern of just, I don't know what it is, but just being involved. But challenging people, but then supporting them too. But the staff would be supported, be better tomorrow than the work today.
Contend, staff recognition, like, we're doing that.
Yeah, we're doing that. Buildings do that to some extent all the time, but that'll end up being a model.
Is there a funding need where, I still have trouble, you know, teachers, they pay for things out of pocket for their students.
There's a website called Donors Choose. Some teachers do give that link to their parents and just say, hey, these are some wish lists, I don't know, you know, markers, whatever. It's just funding for certain projects, but otherwise you're right. It's out of their pocket, or they ask donations, you know, bring in toilet, not toilet, tissue paper. Yeah, right, right.
The baggies, all that, yeah.
There may need to be, I mean, and this goes back to the fiscal that we've talked about. If, if our priority is, you know, continued student growth, even with funding cuts, maybe it's funding creativity. Maybe we are going to have to lean into those different types of crowdsourcing and things like that.
Maybe with business partners.
Yeah, I see different types of ways.
You would know you're being more successful.
And not necessarily more school fundraisers, because they, those can become very oppressive in, particularly in a, in a community who has a very high poverty rate. And that makes that, that makes that, I, I think another thing with staff is that they have some real input when it comes to new programs coming, coming down the pie.
Sure.
That some things look, and we've all been to conferences where some things look really good on paper, and you think, wow, this is so cool. You take it back to the classroom teachers, they go, eh. If you look at it closer, maybe there, there are more issues here than we, than, than we think about.
Absolutely. We touch on almost all of these priorities, but I'd be curious to ask you, what does it look like for our workforce partners? Think about our partnerships within the career center. What do those ties look like if we've done this successfully?
We have people going out into the, into the community and the environs, maybe it might be Richmond, might be Greensburg, wherever those opportunities are, and they can get, they can get good employment straight out of.
So employables.
Increased employment for the county.
Our goal is always to blur the lines between KJ of education and what's next. And so whether that be college, university, whether it be enlisted in the military, whether it be employment, like, we want to blur those lines. And so for us, if that's potential industry partners, that means we've got a menu of options for our kids, from visiting those employers and new job-shotting opportunities, to work-based learning and apprenticeship or internship. Like, that's a huge piece of that. I think, I think those employers having us essentially be trained around what's next is important. So if Reed Health is interested in, you know, having a medical center, then we make that happen, and we help kids earn those skills essentially, and pursue that pathway to employment, whether it be here somewhere else, because they're in the medical profession, or biomedical pathways and different things. So, but you know, that's, this is the conversation we're having all the time. How do we blur those lines and get those people involved?
Just how do we adapt to the changing landscape? You know, 30 years ago, if, if you weren't smart enough, you went to the career center. You know, that was, and that wasn't fair, but that was, Erica, the kids, okay, you have kids in the high school, well, if they couldn't make it in the high school, then they went to the career center. And, and that's just not true. But I think that those old stereotypes are, are very difficult to, to erase, because it's different kinds of learning.
For sure, we're trying really hard to break those stigmas. And the reality of it is that we, there's no reason why a kid can't be early college, and he appears to have a kid like that. There's no reason why they can't be. We have, we're up about 55 kids this next year in the area of Pro Connersville, which is a huge step. And we want to keep pushing that forward, because again, it, it's a good thing for kids to be involved in those programs. And you know, if I'm over there and I'm working in the program I'm in, there's still a correlation to, well, I worked in four-year college, but I'm earning skills, right? Skills that translate credentials, that translate to what's next. It's all, it's back to that conversation of the end graduation, right? And everything we do is focused on that, and drives the work.
I think what we're missing is what financial situation will be in 2029. So if we've done a good job, we have planned appropriately with cuts. And even considering the finding enrollment, as much as we targeted to increase enrollment. And that we still have a cash balance that's healthy. And, you know, our relationship with the union, what the union is, is maintain, you know, all those pieces. what the union is, is maintain, you know, all those pieces right now that injure financials.
And we know that there's so many other factors that you all can't control, but we can plan to the best of our ability.
Yeah, we can look at the horizon and say, these are the things, I mean, that's what we're kind of doing with our discussion about facilities.
Excellent. Any other things that we would, my goodness, look, look how positive this is, three full sheets of if we've done it right, we'll have hit all these marks. Anything else that anybody wants to capture? And then on 2029, we're gonna go back to this and make sure we hit all these marks. Anything else?
That we've accomplished some, that as, as a group of people, we've not, we take, we know we have serious issues with which we have to deal, and we're dealing with them in a, in a responsible way. We're not, as Erica likes to say, we're being proactive as opposed to reactive.
Sure.
And, and I think that boards sometimes are not aware of all the issues that are going on, and something pops up and say, okay, we have to, we have to fix this. But if we are proactive, then we can see those kinds of things that may be coming down, they may not, but at least we have an idea, okay, if this happens, this is what we can, this is, it's not gonna be a complete surprise. If we have a, before we did all the things with Gibraltar, if we had a boiler breakdown in a school, it was like, oh my gosh, we have a boiler breakdown in a school. After, after Gibraltar did its thing, it says, okay, you've gotten, it's a 25-year life out of this, you've gotten 40 years, what does that tell us? In the next few years, you're likely going to have to replace this very expensive piece of equipment, and it's just like in your own houses. It's something that you can do so you don't have to scramble or take money from other places.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. With that, I have about 10 minutes left of content left. I'll give you a choice, do you want to get up and move around for a few minutes, or you want to clap your hands?
Love you.
Yeah, I knew that was gonna be it. Fantastic. Yeah, let's go. Okay, so what I want to do before we transition into some next steps, I want you all exactly know where we're going on for this, I just want y'all to take a look around the room. This is a ton of valuable conversation, dialogue, thoughts, and direction. This is ultimately, what we're looking at is chaotic as it looks like right now, and I promise I won't say this, chaotic, this is, embedded in all of this is the corporation's strategic plan. It may not look like it, but this is going, we're gonna look back from this six, eight months from now, and we're gonna say, oh, we know where that came from, and it's right here. And this goes back to when we talked at the very beginning of how valuable and the role that you all play in this. Because when we get that strategic plan, another thing that would mean success for us is if we can look back on all of these notes and find it hidden amongst all of this. And that will be another measurement of ours, of did we pull it out of what we set from the beginning, eight months from now, is this where it came from? And that's a testament to success. So I know it doesn't look like, but this will become that beautiful fancy strategic plan that we will all be able to say and we will share proudly with this. So I wanted you all to take this in. My promise to you all as always is I will make this a lot more easier to digest and to read, I'm not gonna send you screenshots of all of this and make you decipher through it. We will have this cataloged, we will track this. Additionally, if there's anything, as you think through, I'm big in the middle of the night, I wake up and I'm like, why didn't I say that? You all, we will add to these things. If something bubbles up as a top priority that you want to capture, we're gonna make sure that we get that logged. So I want to make sure that you all know, this is where it's going to come from. Now, from here, we are gonna move into leaning into that directional team, right? We're gonna do different forms of these exercises with the directional team, lean into that portrait of the graduate that you all I know have seen, and I've been able to see too, and see if when we kind of do this process with them, what top priorities bubble out, because they're in those spaces, right? And ideally, we're gonna put that right next to it, and we're gonna see a mirror of a lot of the exact same things. And what that should tell you all is that you all are hitting the nail on the head. You may not be in those classroom spaces and in those schools, but you have the same thought process and focus of our educators in the classroom. And then that should give you all reassurance that as we kind of lean into the directional team, lean into the community, lean into the other sessions, that they all have the same like-mindedness as they are taking your direction and then putting the action to it. So that's what we want to see happen, we're going to see consistent top priorities. Hopefully, when we do this survey with the community, we're also gonna see some of these top priorities. Sometimes they may come back in some negative feedback, but again, we know you're saying it, that's already on our radar, that's a top priority. So we are going to see these consistent themes. So next steps from this will be cataloging and sharing, and then leaning into the directional team. And we don't admittedly know what that looks like yet, we're kind of talking through timing and what that is, but we will lean into them in the same capacity that we leaned in with you. A lot of this information will be shared, we will stand on this, we won't lead front load with that, but afterwards, we want to align and show them, this is exactly where the board landed, and it mirrors where you landed also, so we all know that we're on the same path. So that will be that immediate next step in the strategic planning process. And then we'll talk with the board about what they feel is a next step, you know, should we come into those spaces, should we have sessions where we invite teachers to have kind of, should we invite students to have some dialogue? Is a survey the best way to get that? So we will ask all of those same questions to the directional team, and then based on that, we'll come back to the board and we'll say, this is what we found, this is their suggestion of an action to go forth, do you all agree that that would be our next course of action? And that will kind of be the process as we go, we're gonna take it one step, like I shared, it's fluid, we may have something bubble up from that directional team that we didn't plan for, that's when we want to come back to the board and we want to share it with you, make sure you are able to get that feedback and that direction off of it. So that is that immediate where we are going from when we leave here today. Any questions on the process, what information you all received, and where we're gonna go next from when we leave here today?
As far as public input, are we going to do it in different kinds of, in different kinds of media, just not a survey, maybe small group, working, I know most elementary schools have PTOs, that would be maybe a way to do that. The Little Spartan preschool has a, has a parent council that's, that's pretty, that needs on a regular basis, so maybe those kinds of, those kinds of things, it wouldn't be all at the same spot, but you get, you can get the information.
Absolutely. And when we get to that point, that will be the type of things, the discussions we have with the board. You know, our teachers are saying the best way to reach our parents is maybe through ClassC Ojo, you know, maybe that is a way. We think workforce partners are a QR code, and that's the best way, through email, and maybe a listening session at the public library for the general public, if they'd like to come, if they're not tech savvy, we could have a facilitated session where we capture the thoughts and pen to paper like this. So when we get to that point, we will definitely want to look into different avenues, absolutely. And that's where we'll ask for the input. We will come back and we'll say, this is what we're advising, this is what we think, do you agree with that? Absolutely. Yep, great point. Any questions on, on direction? I see those tired eyes, I get it, I completely get it. So the last thing I want to leave you with today, and you don't have to give any context, you're welcome to if you feel like you need to give context, but I'd love to ask you if you would leave us with one word on how you're feeling, and that can be tired, if you're feeling tired, or it can be a little more positive of how optimistic you are feeling for the process, maybe that's hopeful, just one word to share with how you're feeling for the direction, district, immediately, right now, hungry and tired, that'll go, that's two words here, but one word, I'm gonna ask you to share one word.
Hopeful.
Okay, I like it, fantastic.
Encouraged.
Encouraged, great.
Why did you? Snappy Erica's voice.
Should we make him do a new one?
Yes.
Encourage, okay, times two, encourage. Okay, love it.
I'll go with that one.
I thought you were gonna say tired, I figured you were gonna say tired.
I should have, I need to get up and dance.
Okay. Yeah, that is great.
Yeah, I'm aligned with all of this.
Okay, all of the above, I like it, you can say.
Eager.
Eager, okay.
Eager process.
Great.
Excited.
Excited, okay, great.
More understanding.
Okay, so maybe clarity with it, that's great.
Yeah, I know.
I cheated.
We have a, we have a direction now. We've got a lot of stuff, but Jeremy, we've not had the opportunity to do it in this manner.
Sure.
And it's, it's just, it's all out there now.
Sure.
And now, it's too much, but at least it's out there.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all sincerely for allowing me to be part of this process with you all. Thank you for all this hard work, because it is absolutely hard work, and you all are setting the foundation of the strategic plan here. So thank you sincerely for all of your, thank you, thank you, thank you all. Any questions at any time, you're welcome, I'm sure protocol may send them through you, and you're welcome to reach out, you know, if anybody comes up with anything, questions about the process.
Either ways, well, honestly, I mean, this process is one.
Okay. Okay, absolutely.